I'd like to welcome everyone and adjourn the Board of Education closed session and convene our regular Board of Education session at 6:33. And our pledge of allegiance this evening is from a Brad Oaks student. And Principal Nichols, you're gonna share with us.
Yes, good evening, Board President Golar, Board members, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and the Monrovia community. It is my pleasure to be here with you tonight. With me is Ian Burrell, who was a third grader, so now he's a fourth grader, but he was in Mr. Cobos' class, and he will lead us in the flag salute.
We stand, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So recently Brad Oaks held our science fair, I would say within the past month, where students chose a topic of interest and they researched it, and then they presented their findings. And Ian chose to learn more about echolocation and is here to share his project with you. So Ian, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Mr. Burrell, can you help me?
Hi, thank you for inviting me to your meeting so I can present my science fair project, which is a navigation system for visually impaired. I had this idea because in class, my teacher set up an assignment for us so we could research on an animal, and I chose the dolphin. While researching it, I found out about the echolocation feature, and I really wanted to learn about it. So me and my dad created an echolocation build to represent the echolocation feature the dolphin had. After we showed it to my classmates, my classmates really liked it. So we created something that could help, we started to brainstorm on something that could help someone like the visually impaired, like helps the dolphin. We brainstormed down some ideas, and the final idea we had was a hat that helps a blind person navigate by locating the obstacles they can't see. After we knew what we wanted to do, we started the engineering design thinking process. The first part of it was empathize. Empathize is basically understanding what you're making and who you're making it for, and what's gonna be the best for them. The next part is define. Define is just making a goal for yourself and what you want to be your final product. After that, we did idea it. Idea it is basically just making some ideas for how you want your bill to look like and be. The first idea we had was install it on a baseball cap so it is easy to use. The second one was use different sounds to alert the user where they can go and where they can't. The third one was use an Arduino microprocessor and sensors to reduce the cost. The next step was build a prototype. The prototype was made out of an Arduino Uno microprocessor, ultrasonic sensor, piezoe speaker, silver motor, and wires. The Arduino microprocessor Uno is basically the brains of the whole process. The piezoe speaker is the speaker to alert the users where they can go and where they can't. The ultrasonic sensor is so you can locate the obstacles and the distance they are at. The breadboard is so you can make most of the connections from one place to the other. And the servo motor is a motor that you can program to turn in any direction you want. And we programmed it to turn 180 degrees from left to right, from right to left. So we glued the ultrasonic sensor onto it so it could locate in 135 degrees turning. After that, we started doing testing. Testing went well, but I almost hit a wall. So we needed to do some modifications onto the prototype. The prototype was good, but we needed some modifications. So one of the errors was the piezoe speaker. It wasn't clear enough to know which side you couldn't go and which side you could. And the other problem was that the ultrasonic distance measuring sensor wasn't measuring far enough, so you couldn't detect it close, you were too close when it detected it already. And the last thing which would have been making the final product, which would have been making it smaller, so we could make it so we could just put it on the hat, so we could easily locate everything without needing to build something too big. That's it.
Yeah, I think he's gonna put it on now. And I wanna say, young man, bravo, bravo, bravo. That was probably the best presentation we've had all year. That was thorough, and you can tell that that was his work. Oh my, that is incredible. Can we please take a picture with you and your... It was a long word for it, but let's go up front. Again, outstanding, outstanding. Bye-bye. Okay. And next would be our roll call. All members of the board and cabinet are present. And I have a report out from our closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education approved the appointment of Ruben Jones to the position of Director, Student Support Services, by a vote of four, one, with Board members Golar, Anderson, Hammond, and Travanti voting yes, and Board Member Lockerbie voting no. And our order of business, the Board of Education, I'm sorry, the Board Agenda, Discussion Presentation Items, which include input from representatives of agendized matters, may be moved on the agenda. Do we have any items that we are wanting to have moved?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to pull from consent items number one, number two, number 15, and I apologize for not mentioning this earlier to you, but also item 20, and move them into consent. And I have, a big pardon? I'm sorry, did I not say that? I apologize. Move them into action.
Okay.
And I have no request about the order, so whatever you feel is most appropriate, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so one, two, 15, and 20. Okay, do we have any others?
Madam President, item number three, please.
I'll look this way. You're good, you're good. Okay, noting those items to be pulled from our consent agenda, one, two, three, 15, and 20. Okay. Order of Business, number two. To approve minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting from May 24, 2023. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions, questions, or changes? Okay, can we call to a vote, please?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Communications, we are at Board Member Reports. Do we have any Board Member Reports tonight? Yes, Ms. Lockerbie.
Thank you, Madam President. For their final project, these seniors in the MHS Theater Conservatory had to adapt a one-act scene and direct their fellow students and present that one evening. All of the performances were amazing. Recent graduate Sophia Lee did an adaptation of Lord of the Flies. But instead of it being set as a bunch of preparatory boys being abandoned, shipwrecked on an island, it was a group of kids in a lockdown situation during a school shooting. It was compelling, not only because Ms. Lee's extremely mature and presented it so beautifully, but because it gave me insight into some of the emotions of our students that I hadn't previously had insight into. When I think back on our swatting incident, I think of how fortunate we were that no one was hurt, the opportunity that it gave us to significantly increase security measures and the way that we communicate internally and with the city in the case of an emergency. But Ms. Lee's introduction and the performance gave expression to the lingering effects these types of incidents have on our students. I'm proud that we have had and continue to have social emotional support staff and connected agencies who will continue to support our students. I invited Sophia Lee here this evening, and unfortunately she couldn't make it, but she shared some of her thoughts with me, which I'll read right now. "The Honors Drama Project allowed me to explore all of the parts of putting on a production. Having been onstage my entire life, I thought I had a good grasp on how it all works, but my knowledge had the chance to really grow. I have a newfound respect for directors' tech and especially the writers. I chose Lord of the Flies because it was my favorite classic to read, but I hadn't thought about it in a modern sense until our lockdown. I was trapped in a room with 75 other kids and there was absolute chaos. People were crying and yelling, and there were so many emotions. It made me think about the context of Lord of the Flies and what it would look like to put it into a school setting, a school shooting." "Setting. It was a heavy act to put on, and I'm so proud of my actors for having the maturity and the talent to do it justice. After high school, I'm moving on to Azusa Pacific University, where I am double majoring in Honors, Humanity, and Liberal Arts with a theater minor. I hope to become a high school drama or English teacher." Ms. Lee, you are a very impressive young lady, and I hope that when you have those degrees, you consider coming back to Monrovia Unified School District. We'd love to have you here. That ends my board report.
Thank you. And the superintendent's report.
That went quicker than I thought it would. Thank you for this, Ms. Lockerbie. Good evening, Board President, Board Members, and members of the public, as well as staff. Just a couple of things, but before I go into talking about our graduations and promotions, I wanna thank Mr. Hammond for asking us to invite Ian to come and present his project. I wasn't able to get to Brad Oaks' Science Fair that evening. As you know, there's so many events down the stretch, I just couldn't make it. And now I totally regret that I did, because that was pretty amazing what he had to offer. And I think that embodies something that we shared at the last board meeting. If the board recalls, we did a presentation on our strategic plan, where we talked about our mission, our vision, our core values, our focus areas. And under each of those focus areas, we have specific goals and objectives. And among those goals are project-based learning opportunities, and those project-based learning opportunities fold in design thinking. And everything he talked about at the dais, I guess, or the podium today embodies the design process. You heard, there's a problem, empathy, how do we solve it? Research, brainstorm and conceptualize, leading to a prototype. And then the stages after prototype are test, refine, analyze, those kinds of things. And those are standard steps that any design thinking program would follow, you know, whether you're looking at Stanford and their D-School and the research that goes through that, as well as all of the others. And I'd like to remind the board that that also connects to the innovative school visits in San Diego we did, because they followed that approach with their project-based learning opportunities as well. So I thought that was a perfect highlight of that, and I'm so glad that he was here to present that to us, because it really does embody what we want to do and what we'd like to have as an experience for all students at all grade levels in all schools. So you can only imagine Ian, when he's in 12th grade, the type of work that he'll be producing if we continue to provide those opportunities. So bravo, and again, thank you, Mr. Hammond, for encouraging us to invite them in. I'm glad they were not on summer vacation yet. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the obvious. So I believe since before the last time we met, graduation season and promotion season really did kick off. It seems like forever ago that we had the four-day weekend with Memorial Day, but we did have our first graduation that day, and that was our MCAS graduation, which was superb. You see a few of my favorite pictures from the event, including on the left, that's our student board rep, by the way, so Emma, at the high school's graduation. But graduation is the most special time of year. And I've mentioned this before, but as a former high school principal, graduation season has always meant a lot to me, but as superintendent, it means even more, you know, because it really is the culmination of not only the work that happens at our high school and our adult school, but it also, and in our continuation schools as well. It really celebrates the culmination of the work that has happened across all grades, all schools in the district, and it really is a celebration of the efforts from the board, to the teachers, to the principal, to staff, secretaries, bus drivers. Everybody plays a role in getting us to these moments. And so it was just a very, very special day in those three graduation ceremonies, lots of tears, especially of the adult ed one, because you have adults continuing their education, earning certificates, those kinds of things, and even high school diplomas. It was just a fantastic season. And I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work in making this possible, because it doesn't happen by accident. Along with our graduations, we also have promotions. And so tried to get to as many of these as I possibly could. I had the pleasure of attending both Wild Rose and Clifton. Last year I went to Santa Fe, so I wanted to make sure I went to Clifton. And we had good representation among the cabinet, executive cabinet, each ceremony, and I'm really proud that the board members were at these ceremonies as well. But our promotion ceremonies couldn't have been any better. Just a fantastic spirit, fantastic energy, and we have lots of parents that are excited about the next step, whether it's elementary moving from fifth to sixth, which can be a difficult transition, or it's the middle schoolers moving from eighth to ninth. And one of the things that I thought was interesting and something to reflect on was our middle school, our eighth graders. You know, if you think about it, they started middle school remotely. They weren't necessarily allowed on campus at that point in time. And you think about the perseverance to make it through middle school to get to that point where they're ready to promote to high school. It's tremendous, and I think it's fair to say the same of our high school students, our seniors, even though they're older students at that point, and when they started high school in ninth grade, it was the pandemic towards the end of the year that changed everything. There's a lot of, there's a great embodiment of tenacity, of hard work, and resilience. And again, that doesn't happen by accident. That's the collective efforts, beginning with board, all the way through to an instructional aide, or even an avid tutor, or what have you. And that also represents the work of our community as well, for always coming behind, or coming in front, and making sure that they're embracing. So a great, great season and a great school year. Believe it or not, the planning for 2324, god, it's hard to believe saying 2324. The planning for 2324 really began in earnest a couple of months ago, just being honest with you. But we are all looking forward to what lies ahead. We know there's gonna be great things. Last thing that I wanna share is that our summer school program has gotten off to a fantastic start at all levels. As the board knows well, we are offering, obviously, opportunities for students to improve their grades, to improve their skills in reading and mathematics, but also opportunities for enrichment in all kinds of areas, including the arts. We also have expanded our outreach and our work with Citrus College to provide some college-level courses for students in the high school as well, beyond early college, that are very popular. And I think if I'm remembering this number correctly, I think we have about 1,000 students enrolled in one summer school program or the other, which, was that about 20% of our enrollment? Pretty solid, really, really solid. And we got off to a fantastic start. And I'd like to thank the principals of the host schools, our summer school leads. I'd like to thank executive cabinet, cabinet, and everybody underneath in terms of our maintenance workers, getting classrooms ready, our bus drivers, our food services workers, to make all of that happen is really impressive. So congratulations, summer school's rolling along. And we look forward to providing an update on summer school and the work that we've done as we annually do, probably in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are at public comments. "The Board of Education encourages the public participation and invites you to share your views on school business. Please complete the addressing the Board of Education form and give it to the Secretary of the Board, the Superintendent, or the designated Ms. Becerra, prior to the meeting. In order to accomplish board business in a timely and efficient manner, public input is limited to no more than three minutes per person, per agenda or non-agenda item, totaling no more than 20 minutes per item." First, we have public comments for items not on the agenda. "In compliance with the Brown Act, items not on the agenda legally cannot be discussed by the board tonight. We welcome your input, but are limited to asking clarifying questions and gathering contact information. Items requiring board discussion or action will have to be calendared for a future meeting, so that all interested parties may provide input." Ms. Becerra, do we have any public comment for items not on our agenda?
Yes. First, I'd like to call Ms. Mari Bardona to the podium.
Good evening, Board, Cabinet, and Community. Last week, the Superintendent of Burbank Unified was put on leave. Now, we don't know why, it's a personnel issue, but what we do know is that in the past two years, 10 of 19 principals and several administrators have left that district. These are numbers, or data, if you will. Why is data important? Well, because data should be used to inform decisions. You expect teachers to look at data in PLCs to inform their practice, and you should be the model of that expectation. So here are some Monrovia USD data upon which to reflect. Since the arrival of Superintendent Ryan Smith, 22 administrators have left the district and are working elsewhere. These include five of five cabinet positions, five of five district directors, and 12 of 17 site administrators. Two are MUSD alumni. Five of those administrators were hired by Superintendent Smith. In addition to these leaders, we have lost instructional coaches, teachers, not including retirees, and classified staff, including the Secretary to Deputy Superintendent Greg Francois. Several of them have been MUSD alumni. So what does this data reveal? What it might mean to school, what might it mean to school climate and culture? What might it ultimately mean for student achievement or for the social emotional environment intended to support that achievement? More importantly, what might it reveal about those who lead this district and their practices? What might it reveal about those charged with ensuring district leadership is effective? There is plenty of research on the importance of collective efficacy and its effect on how well teachers and hence students do. How does a revolving door of leaders and others affect the collective efficacy of the organization? It creates uncertainty and stability, even fear. It makes people feel they are not good enough, that their work is not valued, that dissent is dangerous. Effective leaders influence, inspire, support, serve, empathize, listen, seek, to understand. They work to get people on the bus. They don't throw them under the bus. They learn from criticism and find inspiration in the success of others. They take responsibility, they don't blame. They collaborate and cooperate to build relationships with people at all levels of the organization. They do not surround themselves only with the voices of consent. How leaders treat those they serve trickles down to administrative offices, classrooms, to the teachers, to our children, and it does affect student achievement. As board members, instead of telling stakeholders that you're not sure what people do because there's been so much turnover, find out. People leave for a reason, and numbers do tell a story. Grab a data protocol and review the data, because it is okay to make mistakes. It's okay to make a poor decision. What is not okay is to not take ownership. What is not okay is to blame others. What is not okay is to make assumptions. And if you expect teachers to do it, then what is not okay is to ignore the data. Thank you.
Ms. Becerra, do we have other comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes. Next, I would like to call Ms. Desiree Harbo to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, Board President Golar, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and members of the community, all of them also watching at home, because hopefully we have lots of people tuned in. I made a really emotional public comment and plea to this board at the May 24 meeting. In the days following, I was taken completely by surprise. I was flooded with an outpouring of support and appreciation for just speaking up. The messages came from all segments of the MUSD fabric, our students, our parents, our community members, even teachers and staff, both past and present. Many I don't even know personally. It has been an extraordinary experience to connect with so many people because they also genuinely care about our Monrovia students, their well-being, and the incredible people taking care of them in our Monrovia schools. I have a message to the Monrovia community. Thank you! I was so nervous, but my- I was so nervous, but my love for our students and our community guided my heart to publicly share a growing concern and to shine a light on how decisions affecting our children are being made without any meaningful input from the stakeholders. What I've learned in these surprisingly honest conversations following that last board meeting is that people are afraid to show up here, they are afraid to speak up at all, they are fearful of being targeted and subjected to punishment or retribution. Some reached out just to warn me to be careful about speaking up. At this moment, I do feel a bit like Katniss Everdeen. I'm a Hunger Games fan. I can't stand here before you tonight and pretend that this district is okay right now. It's not. With my utmost respect for each of you leading our district, how can you possibly accept a climate of fear and intimidation? That should absolutely not be the Monrovia Unified experience. That is not what the board was elected by the voters to accomplish. That is not why district leaders were recruited, selected, and placed under generous contracts with our school district by this very board. Fear. Do the Board's goals and directives to leadership include the use of intimidation and fear tactics, being unprofessional, condescending, and generally unethical? Is it really, or is that really the Board's vision of taking our district to the next level? I certainly hope not. Fear is unacceptable, especially in education, and especially in Monrovia. It is your responsibility as our governing body to ensure that MUSD does not continue on like this. After all, we're losing our strong Monrovia heartbeat in the process. Board, you have taken note, or have you taken note of how many truly outstanding individuals have left Monrovia or are being reassigned? You just heard some of that data. How, how many positions are vacant? How many positions are not getting filled? Why? Why have there been so many? Are you paying attention? Because this community certainly is. I cannot urge the board enough to immediately address and recover our district culture. Our present and our future as a thriving and wonderful school district, place to educate our children, and place to work and enjoy an entire career depends on it. The district's next level cannot just be superficial. Reflect and take a deep dive. Have the courage to pivot and make whatever necessary changes to save our district and Monrobian culture. It's okay to make mistakes, but we must all learn from them and do better when we know better. To the Monrovia Unified community, please speak up. It matters, and you are not alone. Board, it's not change that's hard, it's change that's absent of respect for those serving our students and community that is entirely unacceptable and un-Monrobian. Thank you for your service.
Ms. Becerra, do we have any other comments for items not on our agenda?
Yes, I would like to call to the podium Ms. Dina Calabresi.
Hello, members and MUSD Cabinet members. I wanted to comment tonight about culture and morale in MUSD. Some members of the Monrovia USC community are hesitant to speak up about issues they are facing regarding what they see as unnecessary changes happening. The fear of retaliation. They feel pressure to conform to the new direction, and their concerns are brushed aside. Their concerns are brushed aside. I'd hope that you can all agree that what's best for the students and teach, are, is, are teachers who care, yet the district administration is cutting support staff that work with students and hiring more administrators. I'm also concerned about the lack of character and accountability among the district leaders. They criticize the practice of discussing staff-related matters without their presence, and I find it sneaky and unprofessional. When teachers don't agree, they are told things such as, maybe you don't belong here, or maybe you don't care about the kids, mentioned to an alumni of the district. I know that when I was at Monrovia High, it was pretty awesome to have teachers who were Monrovia Wildcats because I knew that they really cared about us and our school. If we as alumni, MUSD, MUSD alumni don't belong here, then who does?
That's all. Thank you.
Do we have other comments for items not on our agenda?
Yes, I would like to call Mr. Chris Luce to the podium.
Good evening, staff, school board members. Dr. Smith, shout out to Katniss, too. I'm a fan of Hunger Games, so. And I love people who get up to these very uncomfortable places to speak and still speak anyway, even though you're like nervous and stuff, kind of like I am right now. But I'm here to just share about an opportunity for young people here at Monrovia High School, actually, young entrepreneurs in particular. I'm doing this as a, a young person myself that was an alumni here of the, of Monrovia High School, and didn't really go a traditional path to getting to my career. So I just wanted to share this with any high school student parents that might be paying attention. I'm here to represent the organization called the I Dream Society, and we're kicking off our initiative, which is called the I Dream Art Collective in October coming up this year. We kicked off the application process at our Monrovia Days booth. I saw a few of you school members there, that was cool. The mission is rooted in empowering young creatives. So what it's going to be is the I Dream Art Collective rack inside UNDS Los Angeles, formerly the Polish Company, not sure if you're aware of it. Really cool, fly, culturally tapped-in spot. You'll see like Jordans in the window, and it's just a cool place. But we're going to be highlighting an entrepreneur prominently for a three-month installment of their product, their brand, their clothing on that rack. And we're also going to host an event for them where fans, friends, and family can come out and support. So the goal is to help a young entrepreneur see their art, brand, or product in a retail location. They'll also get to learn what it takes to prepare for retail, how to promote, sustain, and all of that while growing their business. So just wanted to come in and share that opportunity with any high school students here, young entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Mr. Luce, can I ask a clarifying question or make a request? Could you email all of the board with that information so that we have, have that to, to refer to and, and be able to send out?
Yes, gladly. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry. Also, a clarifying question. Do you have the date?
So October is the kickoff. It's going to be an ongoing campaign that we're hoping to just really set up shop there and have this be an, an open situation. But currently, it's going to be a three-month for each. We're, um, application process until the end of August, so we have the month of September to prep for our first entrepreneur, and then a three-month run, and then we'll be changing each artist every three months.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have other comments for items not on our agenda?
There are none.
Then we'll go to public comments for items on the open session agenda.
There are none.
And we are then ready for the staff presentation of the Local Control Accountability Plan and Proposed Adopted Budget. So will we, will we be starting with LCAP? Or budget? Oh, both. Okay.
Good evening, President Golar, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, members of Cabinet, and guests. My name is Greg Francois, and I'm here with my colleagues, Dr. Greg Jerome and Jessica Garcia, and we are here to present information regarding our 2023-24 LCAP Local Control Accountability Plan. Next slide. The objective of tonight's presentation is to provide an update of our LCAP, better known as the Local Control Accountability Plan. Show the process of how input was collected from our diverse group of educational partners in a multitude of formats. We will provide an overview of the LCAP and highlight feedback collected from our educational partners, along with the key themes that were discovered. We'll also share the next steps in the process and present our budget information. Next slide.
Good evening, Board President Golar, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet members, and members of the community. It's my pleasure to present an overview of our LCAP. Tonight's presentation will provide a summary of our proposed LCAP for the 2023-24 school year. The LCAP is a three-year plan. Ours was adopted in June of 2021, and then each year within the three-year cycle, we make revisions to the plan based on input from our educational partners, as well as our district's performance in the areas indicated as the state's priorities. Our current LCAP is made up of 11 goals with 43 actions that are designed to meet these goals. The actions fall into three general categories: academic achievement, student and family engagement, and college and career readiness. Our LCAP focuses on supporting what the state identifies as unduplicated students. These are students who are English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, or in foster care. A majority of the LCAP actions are paid with supplemental and concentration funds, which are tied to serving these students. Next slide. We implemented a number of strategies to gather input from our educational partners. LCAP presentations were provided both in person and in virtual formats, and in English and Spanish. Surveys were sent to all MUSD parents, all MUSD employees, and students in grades three and above. The LCAP input was also provided by parents in both our District Advisory Committee, or ADAC, and the District English Learner Advisory Committee, or the DLEC. Additional opportunities for input were provided to MUSD employees at staff meetings at each of our sites. And we held additional virtual LCAP information meetings for parents and community members in both English and Spanish. Finally, we solicited input from the West San Gabriel Valley Special Education Local Plan Area, or the CELPA. Survey results were, survey results represented a wide range of perspectives. We received survey responses from parents, staff members, and students from each site in our district. Parent participants represented students from a wide range of demographics, including English learners, special education, socio-economically disadvantaged, students in dual immersion programs, students with 504 plans, and students experiencing homelessness or in foster care. Next slide, please. The survey asked for input that related to district priorities. And so this slide shows the percent of participants who responded that they were either satisfied or very satisfied with the level of service provided by our district in each of these priority areas. Overall, the area that was rated highest was exemplary educators, and the area that had the most room for improvement was safe, clean campuses. Next slide, please. Although there were many opinions and perspectives shared, four themes emerged from the surveys and from the input that we received at the LCAP presentations and committee meetings. Our educational partners expressed that our LCAP should address the following: academic intervention and support for students, support for the social emotional well-being of students, integrating arts and technology into the curriculum, and support for our dual immersion programs. Next slide, please. Our LCAP will also address the state's priority areas, and these are reflected on the California dashboard. Based on our metrics on the 2022 dashboard, our LCAP will focus on the following: reducing chronic absenteeism, improving student performance in mathematics, addressing both attendance and academic performance of students with disabilities, and the attendance and academic performance of specific student groups at the school sites that have been identified as eligible for additional targeted support and improvement, or ATI. Next slide, please. This slide shows some of the key LCAP actions that address the following identified priorities: intervention in academic support, social emotional well-being, and reducing chronic absenteeism. Some of the actions are current ones, are in our current LCAP, and some have been expanded. Next slide, please. These are additional LCAP actions that address the priority areas of integrating arts and technology and supporting our dual immersion programs. Next slide, please. The LCAP timeline following tonight's public hearing is described on this chart. The presentation of the LCAP for board approval will be at the June 28 board meeting, and this is followed by submission of the LCAP to the County Office of Education. Once approved, we begin implementation of the plan and post the LCAP on our district website. And beginning in this, this winter and into the early spring of 2024, we'll begin, we will be developing a new three-year LCAP cycle. And we've already begun discussing ways to create a more clear and cohesive plan. I'll turn over the presentation to our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Ms. Garcia.
Well, thank you, President, Board President Golar, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and members of the community. I have to follow Ian tonight, and so I'm going to give you numbers, not going to be as exciting as what Ian gave you, but I'm going to try my best. First, I want to thank Dr. Jerome for, and Dr. Francois for their partnership in working to create the LCAP plan cohesively with the budget. And so in this presentation tonight, the LCAP components that we partner up with is looking at one area together as far as the supplemental and concentration carryover. Districts can no longer allow those funds to remain unrestricted. So this year, we're projecting, as we close our books, we estimate that we're going to have about $2.5 million in carryover from the current year that we're in right now. And so when the plan was written for next year, we write, we wrote the plan to anticipate in spending the carryover from current year of approximately $2.5 million in the next year's plan. Next slide, please. The 2324 budget considerations that I'm going to share with you is there's a delayed tax revenue that can translate into mid-year adjustments. And so what that means is that in our state, the personal and business income tax deadlines for some areas of October this year could impact us. That's something, information given to us at the May revision. We saw a few years back that what that meant for us during the COVID time was deferred revenues, and what that meant was we had to plan our cash flows accordingly because the typical cycles that we were told we would receive our cash was delayed. Didn't mean it didn't come, it's just it was delayed. So we don't know what to expect this year, and so I'm sharing that with you because the tax component may impact districts. The other component is that there's some uncertainty with the one-time allocations. The one-time allocations I'm referring to, the Learning Recovery Block Grant, that was something that was given to the, the state, and all districts received funds for that one-time funding. When the governor's budget came out in January, we were told there was going to be no change to that one-time funding. The May revision, it's now been reduced by $2.5 billion statewide. In my upcoming slides, I'll let you know what that means for our district. The other one-time funding that's also been impacted is the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. During the governor's budget, it was initially told in January, it'd be a $1.2 billion reduction. Now, during the May revision, it's been reduced by $600 million more for a grand total of $1.8 billion reduction in total for the state. The other component that affects our budget is that negotiations with both of our bargaining units remain open for the 2324 school year. And so those are also factors unknown at this time that we're not going to see in our budget as well. Next slide, please. So May revision. The May revision assumptions or factors that were given to us was the cost of living adjustment, the COLA, as we know it, is 8.22%. That 8.22% is going to affect the LCFF base funding. It's going to be applied to special education. It's going to be applied to child nutrition, the mandated block grant, and some to child nutrition, the mandated block grant, and some other categorical programs. Some of those categorical programs include state preschool, juvenile programs. If we were a county, it'd be a court, the court schools. Some of the American Indian education funding is also increased by that for the categoricals. And the special education component for AB 602, that means that for the per ADA, funding will increase as well. So what's in current law right now is $820 per ADA. In January, at the governor's budget, it was 866 approximately, and now with this 8.22 COLA, it's looking to be approximately $887 per ADA for special ed. And for reduction to one-time grants, like I mentioned in the previous slide, there's been a reduction to those grants. So what does that mean for our district? Well, the current proposal reduces our district for the Learning Recovery Block Grant from originally an allocation of $6.5 million to $4.2 million. The Arts, Music, and Instructional Grant, that's been reduced. It was initially $3.1 million and is pretty much in half to $1.5 million. The other thing to note in the May revise is that the Universal Meals Program that was introduced in the 22-23 school year, were two free meals per day to any student that requests a meal. Well, that's going to be ongoing. For this year, it's been approved to continue. Next slide, please. So this slide here is our major assumptions for our current year, how we're wrapping up the year, and for the projected years. These rates are given to us to utilize for what we know now and what we can project for later. The COLA for this year, we are closing it out with the 6.56 and the additional base increase of 6.7. Our enrollment this year, 5,047, and you can see our attendance factor is 91.3%. Our UPP, now that's the information that Dr. Girro was referring to in previous slides about some of our students who fall into the categories that fund the supplemental and concentration area. Well, we are at 56.74% for our current three-year average. And then we have to also factor in our STIRS and PERS rates because those have an ongoing effect to our budget as well. These are our major assumptions. I want to point out to you that in our budget, we recognize the projected COLAs for each year that we know to be true today for the next three years. The other thing I want to point out is that when we developed the budget, we considered the enrollment trend that we've been seeing, which is approximately 100 or so students per year decrease. We had an anomaly year, which was the year of COVID, where there was a dip of a little bit more closer to the 200 range. We've taken the approach to look at pre-COVID decline and the years after that to determine what that decline would be, excluding that one year of COVID, because that year seems to be a little bit of an anomaly. The other thing I do want to point out is that we're using a 91.3% ADA. Why we're using that is because last year, when budget was developed, there was a 94% ADA utilized. Well, when we captured the ADA rate this year during our P2 cycle in April, the rate came in at 91%. Now, historically, prior to COVID, our attendance rate was higher. So the methodology behind this was to utilize a more conservative approach to the attendance rate because that's how we're funded. So we looked at the enrollment trend decline, the attendance new trend that we have now to remain conservative for funding. Should that go up in the out-years, we will adjust budget accordingly. And then the other component that is crucial here, or key here, is for the supplemental and concentration dollars, the factor that we look at as well is the three-year average for the unduplicated pupil percentage, that UPP rate. And so that rate as well, it seems to be true in trend. Last year during budget, it was put in at 56%, and the capture rate this year was 56.74 as a three-year. So this feels like a true assumption that we can go ahead and maintain flat and adjust accordingly should we see another trend change. That STIRS rate is given to us from STIRS and PERS, both of those retirement rates, and so those are what we're projecting now to be the factors for our assumptions. Next slide, please. And this right here is our 2023-24 LCFF funding factors. This slide is really just telling you for each grade level how we base fund and what that means in conjunction with the supplemental and concentration dollars. Two things I want to point out here is that you see TK through three, each grade level, ninth to 12. There's the base grant funding for 22-23, and then that COLA that I mentioned in a previous slide, that 8.22, that's the dollar amount per pupil that gets added on to the base grant. So for 23-24, base grant per ADA, you'll see there's a dollar value. Now, for TK3 and ninth, 12, those are the only two grade levels that do get a grade span adjustment in the LCFF funding model for base grant funding. So we'll see that base grant per ADA total for 23-24. Then there's two other components to that, and that's that supplemental and concentration component, and those get added on as well. And so for our district, we are at 56.74. And so for some of our students who fall into those unduplicated pupil percentages depending on their grade level, the funding that we receive for them, if they're identified as a part of that population, depending on their grade level, is that bottom line that we see there. Next slide, please. This is our general funds unrestricted multi-year projection slide. In this slide here, you see where we are estimating how we are going to end this year and how we are estimating, based on the major assumptions I gave you, on how we're going to end each year after that. On this slide, you'll see that we're projecting for current year to have $61.19 million in revenue. You'll notice that the revenues appear slightly flat in the out-years. That's tied to those assumptions I shared with you in prior slides about the enrollment declining, yet the attendance staying flat. So what's happening to our budget is that as the enrollment declines, our attendance is staying flat, but we're still receiving a COLA from the state. So what happens essentially is enrollment's declining, we're getting a COLA, so it's having an effect to show a flat in our budget for revenue. The other thing I want to point out to you is that in the current year, you'll notice contributions for our $10.1 million. And why is it less this year, and why does it go up next year and remain in that area? Well, in this year, we've been examining what expenditures are in our special education areas or areas that we contribute to that qualify for some of our one-time funding. And so what I've done is we've looked at it, and we've moved some of our expenses from our special ed expenditures that are allowable to move to some of the COVID one-time funding. And so we've moved them to protect our general fund and to allow for there to be an ending fund balance that would allow for those expenses to go into that one-time funding. You'll see that they do come back next year. Now, what I do want to point out is that we're always looking for opportunities to protect the general fund in the sense of moving expenses to some of those one-time pots that they do give us and that are allowable under guidance as both state and federal. And let's go on to the next slide. So some of the key takeaways of that prior slide. Our ending fund balances account for this school year's 6.5% salary increase and the projected 8% health and welfare contributions. Our ending fund balances also include reserves for 3% for economic uncertainty. In a prior slide I mentioned, we're going to have some LCAP carryover, so we also recognize our LCAP carryover in there in our ending fund balance. And then if you looked at that slide, you'll notice that there was some net increase or decrease negatives in the previous slide. In our ending fund balance, we also reserve for those future potential deficits should they come to fruition. And one of the things I do want to also share is that when the budget was presented last year, the 24-25 projected ending fund balance was predicted to be a $7.7 million ending fund balance. If you look at my slide that I just showed you, that $7.7 million is still in the ending fund balance, but that's inclusive of the raise we just gave and an increase of 8% health and welfare. Why? Well, I'll give you the two reasons why. Number one, when the budget was adopted last year, the COLA was at 6.56, the additional COLA wasn't in there. So that's added a base of $5 million approximately each year. The other component to that is that in my time working with the team here, we strategically looked at the budget to find other sources of funds that we can move expenses to in order to build our ending fund balance. The last thing about this slide and the takeaway for this is that the district is appropriately budgeting and monitoring to ensure fiscal solvency each year with a positive ending fund balance while maintaining our reserves. Monrovia is not a large district, therefore Monrovia's balances will never compare to a large district. However, I do want to share with the board and the community that our district is appropriately budgeted and comprehensively spending for a district of our size. Next slide, please. This right here is the general fund restricted NYPD. Now, the difference between this slide and the last slide is that this is the restricted funds. These funds are categorical programs. These funds are one-time funds. Not all of these funds are ongoing. And so for this particular slide here, the ending fund balances, or actually, let's start with the revenues. You'll see that our revenues this year are higher than they're going to be in the out-years. Well, that's because of the one-time funding we've received. Those one-time funding pots don't continue. So from current year to the final year, you see about a $12 million reduction, and that's because the funds are not ongoing on this particular slide. And so ending fund balances still, ending fund balances are showed there, 12.5 million all the way out to 19 million. Some of that is because these one-time funds, plans are still being developed. So will these ending fund balances carry through? Not necessarily. As these one-time funds have been coming in, we are still developing plans for them. And so I'll let the board know now, we do not anticipate for these funds to have an ending fund balance of such because there's expiration dates on them, and there's plans that are required. So we will be making appropriate plans to spend them down. Next slide, please. This is the general fund combined NYPD, and what this is, is just a summary page of the two slides I shared with you when you combine them. So in combining them, our revenues are 91.2 million for unrestricted and restricted together, expenses 82.8 million. And then each year, you do see the combined net increase of 8.1, and then it decreases, again, one-time funding, that's not going to always be there. And so ending fund balance projected for this year is 24.6 million combined. As I look at the financials of the district, I don't focus on the restricted side for the fiscal position of the district. I focus on the unrestricted side because that's the component of the ongoing funding. So restricted can fluctuate and change depending on the funding that we are receiving from the state at any given time. Next slide. So this slide here is just a snapshot of what we expect for all of our other funds to look like in the next year. So we have adult ed in there, child fund development, our cafeteria fund. Each fund has an ending fund balance. One of the funds I do want to point out to you, and I know that the community has voted on the Measure MM Building Fund 21, you'll see it has a beginning balance of 18.6 million, and that's because we're projecting to fund our bond in the next couple of weeks, and with that funding coming through, it's going to become a beginning balance for next year. We do have some expenses already built in there, and we project an ending fund balance of 12.6 million. That will absolutely change as we continue our facilities projects throughout the district for safety and modernization. Next slide, please. And the next steps for the budget. June 15th, which is tomorrow, the legislator's budget is due to the governor. These are the dates that we have to follow per ed code to be in compliance. So on June 28th, the board will consider approving the LCAP and the budget, and then by June 30th, we're hoping that the governor does sign the budget and there aren't too many changes. If there are changes that are material to the budget, then on or before August 16th, we do have to consider a 45-day budget revision. We've seen those more often than not in the past couple of years due to COVID, and so we are hoping that this maintains the same. And lastly, to close the books for 22-23, we do have a September board meeting where we consider the unaudited actuals that our auditors do come and view after the board does approve them. Thank you. Any questions?
I need to go back to LCAP, please. It's on the educational partner input. I know that there were a number of avenues that were used for outreach. How many respondents did you receive?
Approximately 400 responses to the online survey. We did receive a lot of input at our different meetings, but the survey in particular was about 400.
Okay. How does that, how does that measure against years past, notwithstanding COVID where everything was put away, but prior to that?
So the year before, we did have more responses, and the majority the year prior were from students. So it's interesting because I looked at the number, it didn't quite make sense at first, but we had a high, I think 75% of the responses last year were from students, and we had about the same number of parents responding. So, yeah.
Going to the next slide, educational, the key themes. Tell me the categories, please, that were on the survey.
I think those are the...
Just the two?
Oh, the ratings.
Right, the ratings. I'm sure there's like four or five.
Yes. So there were four categories: very satisfied, satisfied, somewhat satisfied, or not at all satisfied.
What's interesting to me, and I think this is something that we had talked about as a board when we did the survey for MM, there were people that, when they were contacted, they had no idea what was going on at the school district whatsoever. That is probably our fault for not making sure that we're getting the information out to people. One of the reasons why Gustavo is here is to make sure that the information that we have at the district gets out and assimilated into the public. When I see the numbers that are here and the satisfied and very satisfied, I didn't know what the other two categories were. I assumed what they were. And what it tells me is someone sees a safe, clean campus, and you have 67% satisfied or unsatisfied. That is a tremendous amount of people who are not satisfied. And, you know, you can make a number tell you whatever you want to make that number tell you, and I'm not saying that that's the voodoo going on here. 67% of people who are satisfied or are very satisfied with a safe, clean campus, as its designation, from the number of people who took the opportunity and the time to fill out the survey, there is a significant number of those people who are not satisfied. We need to do better as a district to bring these numbers significantly higher. These are not, it's not a statistically accurate survey by any stretch of the imagination, which is why I keyed in on it. And I've wanted a statistically accurate survey for years because it removes unduplication, and it also gets people who are not necessarily having an axe to grind, if you will, and then getting their friends to come in, and then you're tainting the survey. And we're going to try to... And we're going to try and supply services based upon the information that we got from a survey, which makes it very difficult in a survey that is not statistically accurate. Because now you're almost guessing is, for the people who took the survey, is this really what they want? Or is this really what the people want who went and got their friends to fill out the survey? You have to weigh that. And we've been weighing it ever since LCAP came into being. So we used to use the monkey, survey monkey, and the monkey. And you're getting a snapshot. But I think if you looked at this and you looked at the numbers of the satisfied versus the very satisfied, if you flip those over into the other category, that is where we need to spend our attention, if nothing else, to get those numbers up into these categories. So, I mean, I always spend time on the survey because we are going to make a decision of about $4.5 million predicated on the 400 respondents. We need to be as careful as possible.
Thank you very much. I was also looking at that graph or our chart. To piggyback on what Mr. Hammond said, if it's possible to disaggregate this data, and I know I submitted this request earlier, I think it'll give us a better picture of what we really need to accomplish here. So my request is that we have a more specific set of data so that we know, for example, prepared for college career in life is going to look very different in the respondents in kindergarten versus in 12th grade. And so we want to make sure that we're not skewing one way or the other. Let's see. Okay, and then, excuse me, I had one other question, two other questions, but they were budgetary questions from Ms. Garcia. I think one is general. I don't think it's tied to a slide. At one point, my understanding was that there was a discussion about changing our funding from just an attendance model to one of enrollment. And I was wondering if you could shed some light on where we are in that, if that has been revisited? Because that could considerably change our future, maybe not this year, but down the road.
So that is still something that's being discussed at the state level, but hasn't been ruled down for a definitive plan for the districts to still implement or start preparing for.
Okay, and I'm assuming we don't have a timeframe where they're going to let us know.
We do not.
And then the other one is regarding the UPP. One of the later slides made me question how this is calculated in our budget. You mentioned a certain threshold. I think it was 55%, and then there's the 65%, if I'm not mistaken, for the concentration grant. Am I saying that correctly?
So which slide are you referring to?
Right now, I happen to see that it's on the LCFF Funding Factors. It's the last line. 65% concentration grant per ADA, and it says UPP above 55. And my understanding, and I could totally be wrong, is that we get a certain amount of funding over 55 and then additional funding over that if we reach a 65%. Is that correct?
We do, and I actually know the dollar amount for that. It's $212,250 that we're going to be getting. So what happens is that supplemental and concentration amount is 6.9 million, give or take. And of that 6.9 million, that 65% difference is $212,250. So that's the additional percentage for that 65% pot.
Okay, great. Well, that probably makes my question moot, but I'm going to throw it out there just because it's kind of mathy and, you know, I like math. Does that percentage, that doesn't... The reason I'm asking is you can see that there are different categories by grade level that are funded differently. We're not having to reach those percentages by grade level, are we? It's a blanket district percentage of 55, and then we get the funding. We're not categorizing it by grade level, are we?
Technically, yes. So here's how it works. The calculator allows for us to put in all of our data by grade level. Okay, so that it spits out funding per grade level. What we have to do to the calculator is be able to dissect it and say, anything from 55% or anything above that, up to that 65% difference, we're going to pull that out so we know that that particular pot, what it's tied to. But every single one of those boxes feed into per ADA for that number, for us to get it.
Thank you. That makes sense. And I appreciate you explaining it so I have a full understanding of how this is funded. Thanks.
It took us some time to learn it.
It's a little bit complicated.
Thank you for your great report tonight, Ms. Garcia. I really do appreciate all the effort that you put into this and your staff. With that, kind of with what Mr. Hammond brought up and then Ms. Anderson on the educational partner input with that survey, what time of the year did this go out?
I believe it went out, it was early spring. I think we sent it out late February and kept it open for a number of weeks. And we sent it through Parent Square, had principals resend it out.
It went through Parent Square?
Did.
Here's an idea, throwing it out. The one time of year that we have all parents' attention is at the beginning of the school year when they have to register and enroll. Is there a way to incorporate this survey within that enrollment registration time? We have that information upfront and we'll have a higher number of participation if it's built in with that process, all the documents that you have to complete at the beginning of the year. That way, you have, you know, better content of your survey participation, for sure. And then that information can be used timely to incorporate with the LCAP plan, especially since we're going forward next year with a three-year plan. I mean, you'll have some solid feedback. Just throwing that out there. Okay, moving on, I do have a question on the LCAP. The carryover, can you explain to me why we have, I think it was 2.5 million in supplemental and concentration estimated carryover? Why does that happen?
So I can speak to it from the budgetary side. What happens is when you create an LCAP or a budget, it's a plan. And plans change. And with the change in the plans, or if we could purchase items out of some of our one-time funds, we did. And so when the plans are developed and you're able to look at other resources that are about to expire and they're allowable, we do move expenses into those other areas. That's a budgetary standpoint. I'll have Dr. Gerok touch on some more specific for our district.
I was going to say something very similar, and a good example would be summer school. So we budgeted a good chunk of our LCAP funds to fund the summer school that we're doing right now. And I think virtually all of summer school is being funded through COVID funds right now.
Okay, where it normally would have been funded through the supplemental.
Exactly, yes.
So this isn't a typical thing where we have that amount of carryover year to year. This is just because we've had the influx of the one-time funding. Because I'm of the mindset that we should be spending this money to improve the quality of education for our students. So I personally do not like to see this much carryover of 2.5 million in this area. So let's make sure we spend it next year.
Yes, I think the intent, I've been told by the county is this year's funds for this year's students, the carryover this year is less than the previous year. But again, the county acknowledges that there's a lot of one-time funds going around. So it's not unusual, but it is not something that should be standard.
Yeah, so they wouldn't penalize us for not using them.
And to add to just one more thing to that, we are not uncommon in having this amount of carryover. In fact, most districts right now are seeing an influx of carryover in these types of funds due to that one-time funding that we have.
One more question. And just for the public certification, all board members received this rate binder right here. Everything that Ms. Garcia presented tonight is just a summary or consolidation of what is in this binder. And I do want to hone into the Food Services Department, Food Services Fund. And this is just something that does bother me. And if maybe you can explain it so that it doesn't bother me so much. But the unassigned, unappropriated funds for the 2223 year ends with $3,970,000. It's projected to have $4,118,000 next year. Can you explain why we have that amount there?
The unassigned portion?
Yeah, the unassigned.
So those areas right there are tied to particular resources. I'd need to look into to find out why they're laying in the unassigned. Most Fund 13, the nutrition should not be assigned. So I need to follow up and find out particularly why.
Yeah, I definitely would like an update on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for this extensive report. It's clear that you took a lot of time and care, and I appreciate it from all of you. LCAP first, please. And I do want to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Hammond and Ms. Travanti had mentioned, and Ms. Anderson also. So first of all, you had answered Mr. Hammond's question about how many people took this survey. And you had said about 400 online. Is that, and I know that you went out and went physically to places. So is that number, approximate number, total or just the online? So I'm, again, going to look at the statistics, the key themes statistics. So I'm trying to figure out, is that number 400 or is that number bigger?
So 400 reflects the number of participants in the online survey. So we did receive input from many other sources and other venues. So definitely, the input we received from staff members at each of the sites, you know, there are hundreds of folks who either submitted written or we had posters, they could highlight what their priorities were. We had a number of meetings with our advisory committees. We received and documented input in that venue as well. So it's a larger number as far as the amount of input. We tried to just reach as many folks as possible, knowing that the online survey was one way. We hoped to get more through that, but that wasn't the only way to get that input.
So going back to the educational partner input key themes slide, so are these statistics, did these statistics include that input, the physical input?
Definitely included the input we received from the meetings we had. What you didn't see in this presentation, for each of the questions, there was a follow-up question, which was open-ended, asking what are some ways we can improve in this area? So there were a lot of specific suggestions. And so we looked at those open-ended responses and looked for themes there too. So a lot of the time, that's where we got some more details. And that's where the themes really did emerge. There were suggestions that all circulated around certain themes.
Well, that's a wonderful segue. I appreciate it because I wanted to see if there was a more refined aspect around clean, safe and clean campuses. If I were to make a wager, I would say a lot of that had to do with the restrooms. Did you get more information when you honed in on each of these key themes to indicate that? Or am I way off base?
I don't think you're off base. Although I don't remember if restrooms was one of the, it very well could have been. What I did notice right off the bat was depending on who was responding. So when we disaggregate the data, like Mr. Hammond, you were mentioning, you know, we had responses from students were very different than parents as far as safe and clean campuses. So it was much more common for parents to feel that the campuses were safe and clean. Staff and students were more critical, and probably because they spent a lot of time on the campus. And we're not done analyzing the data either. I mean, I think it was easy to see some of the key themes, but to dig down a little deeper, I think it will take some more time. Although there were only 400, 400 on open-ended responses on all those questions, there's a lot of data to go through still, qualitative data at least, yeah.
I appreciate that. So and I think that, again, leads into my next question. So this is the data that you got. Am I to assume that we don't yet have? Because we had for the next slide, which is educational partner input key themes with academic intervention and support, et cetera, you had some input for 202324 LCAP on intervention and academic support SEL chronic absenteeism. So I see that you have input, you have a target and a way that you want to address that here. But I don't think I see yet a target or a way to address these statistics that you have. So like where we're seeing some people want more effective intervention, clear and consistent communication, safe, clean campuses, I don't see a, yet, and how we're going to accomplish that, how we're going to make that better. Do we have that yet, or are we still trying to disaggregate the data?
So some of the input we received may or may not fit within the LCAP, but it's still an important district initiative. So for example, safe and clean campuses is something we know through Measure MM and through other ways, we have plans to address that. And that information we're getting is really important for us to know how important it is to our educational partners. Whereas the LCAP is primarily focused on academic support for unduplicated students. So it doesn't, there's not always a direct connection between the survey and what comes in the LCAP. But we definitely want to take that information and find out how are we addressing that in our district, if not through the LCAP in other ways.
If I may add to that safe and clean campus component, Dr. Gerok is right, it may not all be allowable under the LCAP, but that doesn't mean that it's not a priority for the district. And in a recent Friday update, I believe I shared with the board that we are looking at areas of assessing our campuses. Specifically, our Director of MOT, Mr. Anthony Prada, is working to go through campuses to identify what types of cleaning supplies do we have? What types of tools and resources do we have? What type of training is needed for our custodial maintenance grounds folks? And the other component to that is how long does it take to clean given bathrooms, classrooms, cafeterias? And what are our processes and procedures on that? So that is at the forefront for our business team to support those efforts. And so we will be bringing more updates to the board and for the community to see those efforts improved.
Thank you for that. And you know, I want to clarify where I was going with the bathrooms. And I did not at all mean that MOT or custodians are not keeping things clean. That was not my implication. My implication was how some of our students use the bathrooms. What happens in the bathrooms? So thank you for explaining that so that I could make clear the implication was not that our MOT does not keep the bathrooms clean. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify that. I wanted to move over to the LCAP about the S and C carryover. Can you explain that for me? Does that mean, it says districts can no longer allow the unrestricted carryover from S and C grants to remain unrestricted? I don't quite understand that.
So in the past, districts used to be able to utilize putting that S and C carryover right back into the general fund and not necessarily have to identify the use for the supplemental and concentration purposes it was designed for. Now we're having to monitor that closely and call out that carryover and put it in a reserve component line, a commitment line or an assigned line to just call out and say, this is our carryover and we intend to put it into the next year's budget to be used for supplemental and concentration dollars.
So it has to say, stay as S and C money. It doesn't disappear?
No.
Okay.
No, it's called out particularly for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. On the May Revision slide that begins with Cost of Living Adjustment Bullet, Reduction to One-Time Grants Bullet, Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. Can you explain what that was? What that was?
So that was a one-time grant given to districts this, this current fiscal year. The name says Arts and Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block, but the grant is much more than that. That is one component of it. It's for any type of learning recovery as well, to provide any type of support in the classroom, any type of it's a very broad grant, although the name is not broad. We can use it for district resources pretty much by any means. I can provide you with the exact language for that in an update. But the interesting part of this is that this, before I joined the team, the team was already taking a conservative approach and only budgeted for what we had initially received, which was the one million dollars. So the district had never even accounted for the three point one in our budget. We were very conservative with that.
Now you call, you're calling it a one-time block grant. Does that mean one time ever only or one time a year?
Just one time ever, one time ever only, you get it and you use it until it's gone. If it had an expiration date, you would have to use it before the expiration date. And so these do, are tied to expiration dates. So we have to use them by twenty-seven, twenty-eight year end.
On the next slide, Ms. Becerra, the major assumptions. The first two lines, COLA and Additional Base Increase. The Additional Base Increase is additional to the COLA, correct?
Correct.
And I think Ms. Anderson touched on this maybe or something similar. During COVID, we had an ADA allowance. Is that gone?
So what I think you're referring to is the relief that the state provided to districts, which was the ADA relief that you could go ahead and utilize your three prior year averages of your attendance. And so what that allowed was for districts to not have a cliff in the sense that we would dip in our attendance specifically for our district. And most, actually, all districts in the state benefited from this. It allowed for us to have some type of attendance relief in our funding.
And has that?
That is still in full effect.
And when does that end?
As far as we know, there is no change. I think Ms. Anderson was asking about the enrollment component. And so until we hear that there's a change, then we'll notify the board. As of now, all of this funding that you're seeing is all based on the three prior year ADA average. Now, the LCFF calculator is built in that manner so that if our enrollment and attendance increases, the calculator will give you the better option. It'll say, if your current attendance capture rate is better than your three prior year average, we're going to give you that rate.
So we can take the better?
So we can take the better of the two. In this budget, because of our declining enrollment and the capture rate of our rural attendance, we're getting the three prior year average in each year.
And you said you, it doesn't look like it has an end yet.
That's correct.
So it could potentially continue. Because as I, as we were looking at it during COVID or right after COVID, it was a three-year thing. So we were, I was just looking at it as a three-year thing, but that's still moving?
It's still moving.
Okay, thank you. I have it written on this slide. I don't think it matters which, which slide. But you had referred to the three percent fund for economic uncertainty that we're required to reserve. I recall a three percent reserve that we also had to keep for groundskeeping?
Yes, that is called the three percent for routine restricted maintenance. And where that's reflective in the budget is that contribution. So the contribution is built of two components, two major components, I should say. One is special education and the second factor is the routine restricted maintenance account. And so we put three percent to contribute to those efforts to keep our grounds maintained.
Can you point to it in this?
So if you go to slide, go to the General Fund Unrestricted NYPD, which is the next slide, you see the contributions.
Okay.
That contribution, that is, the two major components are special education and routine restricted maintenance. Because we contribute to the restricted fund for both sped and routine restricted maintenance because that's where they're housed. So when you go, go two more slides, you'll see the opposite effect where we're placing that money in the restricted side to be utilized for those efforts.
And that's in the net decrease?
That's in the contribution.
Oh, in the contributions.
So we take it from unrestricted and we put it in restricted.
That answered my question. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, and we're going to take a five-minute or so recess. Welcome back. We will reconvene. And we are at Consent Agenda. Routine items of business placed on the consent agenda have been carefully screened by members of the staff and will be asked upon by the board with one motion. Upon request of any person, an item on the consent agenda may be considered separately at its location on the meeting's agenda. And we pulled from Consent Items one, two, three, fifteen, and twenty. So I'll entertain a motion.
With that notation, I'll move consent.
Second.
Any further discussion? And we'll call for the vote.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll go to our action items. And what I will ask of us is to take those items that were pulled from consent in that order at the top of our action item. Okay, so we had Item One pulled from consent. And this is the Service Agreement Renewal with Renaissance Learning. Dr. Francois, please.
The Board of Education has requested to approve the renewal of the DNA Data and Assessment Software Services Agreement with Renaissance Learning Incorporated for Student Data and Assessment Management from July one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. The Monrovia Unified Schools District has utilized Renaissance Learning Incorporated, formerly Illuminate Education, as a web-based benchmark assessment and test questions for elementary and secondary course subjects, math, English, science, and social science since two thousand and fourteen. This agreement continues the use of Renaissance Learning Incorporated for DNA, student data and assessment management, use of Enspec Item Bank and pre-built assessments, and adds the automated grading software feature.
Are there questions? Thank you. How often are these tests given throughout the year?
Depending on the course and grade level, some could be as often as each trimester for elementary. It could be quarterly benchmarks at the secondary level.
So each trimester, so that could be three times a year?
That's correct.
And, or, and, or?
Up to.
Four times a year?
Correct.
And these are, are these just reading benchmarks or reading or all of our benchmarks?
All of our benchmarks.
These are all of our benchmarks. So total benchmarks could be either three or four times a year?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Do teachers like this platform?
Teachers are, are very satisfied with this platform and look forward to using it. And one of the features that we received the, the most impact, feedback on is the, the grading, the grading software. So one, it helps ease their load a little bit, and the great So when it helps ease their load a little bit and the great thing about it, instead of grading things with pencil and paper. Um, getting the automatic response for them to be able to utilize data during a PLC collaboration time much sooner than they would if they did them all by hand.
And you got this information, do you, like, do you poll teachers during a PLC or or like the end of year or?
So we have a curriculum instruction team that that's made up of diverse group of stakeholders throughout our district that we meet with on a regular basis. And I'll have Dr. Drew to come up to to share a little bit more about that. Um, but this is something that we receive input during those meetings and a desire to renew this contract.
Thank you, yes, just a second that at our, we call them CIA meetings, curriculum, instruction and assessment, we have teachers from every site. And so among the things that we ask teachers is what are the most important educational technology programs or platforms and illuminate? Is always near the top, it's it's a hub, it serves as a hub for all of not just assessments, but just data in general. Um, there's a lot of of features and capacities, but I think for many teachers, it's a what they know how to act, how to navigate. To access assessments, to get reports on on achievement, um, so it's become more and more important for teachers.
And so is this an effective program?
Think it's it's it is, it's effective and important, there's so much data. And so what's become more and more important is how do we um make use of that data? How do we create reports that show trends instead of digging through ten different assessments? Let's say it's an easy way to to disaggregate or aggregate data and see how students are doing. It can link to grades, um, it can link to standards. Um, so if a teacher wants to give uh feedback about a particular standard, there are ways in that platform to say, okay. Uh, a particular reading language art standard, you can find questions that might relate to that. So I I think the most powerful tool for many teachers is just a way to organize uh the data, how to utilize it as well.
And so. So it looks like teachers can have access to the data.
Absolutely.
Not just upload it.
It's most important for teachers to have access to it, yes.
And so they can assess it, who else can assess the data results or the data in general?
So the data is accessible to teachers, principals, district leaders. And of course, it depends on their level, what they would have access to, but teachers, of course, have access to their students' data. Whereas a principal would have us uh school-wide data.
And just to piggyback on that, and especially at the elementary level, our interventionists will have access to the data as well to know what students to be able to pull. For small group instruction, reteaching as well, so that's a, that's another group that really counts on utilizing the data.
So now, so that would be used because there are beginning of the year. Tests that are given that are not these benchmark tests, correct? And that. That gives the interventionist the the first opportunity to see where intervention might be needed, with whom intervention might be needed. And then can they track? With using this, so I've got these four kids, five kids, ten kids, I'm going to continue to um monitor. Their benchmark assessments.
Yes, so it can, it can organize students by their performance, it can show growth over time, just to clarify. Mo- many of the benchmarks are not necessarily created in illuminate, but we upload them into illuminate. So then, um, so let's say even we've even had assessments that were created by hand. And we digitize them, put them on illuminate, so they're accessible there, and then it's easier to utilize and manipulate that data as well.
So it's just data, so if it's something that illuminate hasn't created, what does that look like?
Um, it's, let's see, it says you would, a student or teacher could, but a student could log or can access an assessment. And take that assessment um on their computer, or you could print out on paper and teachers can upload the scores. Um, there are assessments that they'll go ahead.
Does it just say, um, Timmy benchmark three? Grade?
It, yes, and in essence, yes, it has a label for the type of assessment or which, if there's a certain period of time that they're taking it, it's attached to a date, to a student, to the teacher. All of those things are linked in that platform.
I I tried to get a look at this, um, and I had, I had asked for um samples of this, I I just um was send a link for the um. For the website, for the DNA website, and that. Didn't show me anything, so um, so I I just wanted to get a better idea of what this looks like. Um. And so what is done with that analysis, you have told me, um, I just want to, I want to know that this. Platform that we are wanting to um renew. Is something that ultimately, we want student success, closing the achievement gap. So I'm wondering if if we have any data that says, yes, this is because just because we've been using it since two thousand and fourteen. Doesn't mean. Necessarily that it's closing the achievement gap or um successful for students or teachers. So do we have anything that we can point to that says, yes, so in the past, what's that um nine years? This is the efficacy of this program.
That would be difficult to to quantify, but I would say that. That there's a need for some way to organize the vast data that we have, the achievement data. And so there are other programs that do similar things, but most districts have some way to organize and to house assessment data, assessments themselves. Um, a place where teachers know how to access it. Um, it's hard to imagine. Doing it without that, I think without something like like illuminate, um, it would be difficult. To act to to make use of the data, you'd be looking in lots of different places, there'd be more confusion about how to access assessments. Um, that's not to say that there might not be, and every year they try to make improvements, there are other products on the market that do similar things too. But I think the essence of what it's supposed, what it intends to provide is something that's become pretty important for schools.
You just mentioned that every year something new comes out or there are other products, do you ever evaluate? I don't mean you personally, I mean, is there ever an evaluation of new products?
Usually the vendors will share, here's something new that we're trying out or um, and depending on what teachers say, what's important to them and balancing that with not giving them too many new things all at once, you know.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, I think we start, that's our intention is to make sure we're looking at what's new and what would be a valuable addition.
Those are my questions, thank you so much.
So you will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion, questions? Okay, we'll call to a vote.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Um, I had wanted to do a deeper dive into this and um. Meet with Dr. Drew, I I had wanted to really dive deeply into this because I want to be informed. There's a cost associated with this, there's um student success, there's teacher support, there's collaboration. That I really wanted to get into deeper than the time allows for us here on this dais. I. Don't have enough information um about this platform to make an informed decision. Um, I want to support teachers, I want student success, I just don't know enough about this program. Um, I haven't had the opportunity um to do the deeper dive that I had requested. And so. Without having more information and needing to be informed to make an information, uh, to make a decision. About what we do for our teachers and what we do for our students, I have to vote now on this item.
Board member Chavanti?
Yes.
Board president Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Our next item, uh, the agreement with Explore Learning LLC.
The Board of Education is requested to approve an agreement with Explore Learning LLC. For site licenses and access to Reflex, Frax and Gizmos for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Explore Learning offers three platforms for elementary and secondary schools to utilize Reflex, Frax and Gizmos. Reflex and Frax are interactive and adaptive for mastering basic facts and addition, subtraction, multiplication and division. By helping students quickly gain math fact fluency and confidence while allowing educators and parents to monitor progress and celebrate success. Reflex and Frax are utilized at all elementary schools to support mastery of math standards. Gizmos is an interactive online program for math and science aligned to the latest standards to help educators bring powerful learning experiences to the classroom.
Questions?
I I have one question on this. Um. I am all in favor of doing everything we can to help get our math scores and getting math taught to our students. The only thing I did not see when I was looking at this is how do we measure if it's working or not? How would we do that? Because next year, because this is a one year, how do we know next year that it was, did what it was intended to do, that's what I want.
The, one of the things that Reflex does is they provide uh pretty detailed reports, and so among other things, they, we can track. Usage data, so how many students are using it, um, what amount of time they're using it, how many math facts they're learning throughout the year. As an example, the beginning of this past year, um, the average fluency rate, this is across first to fifth grade, was about thirty-four percent, which is not unusual. Because we're looking at first graders learning how to add and subtract, and by the end of the year, uh, they, we ended up with sixty-seven percent, so a lot of growth. Um, in second grade, the average number of facts is about a hundred and one facts that students learned during that year, so we can track that and compare it to prior years also. Um, so especially with Reflex, it's, they give us pretty detailed reports that we've been able to monitor year to year. They're building that capacity with Frax as well, they they're just beginning to build those reports as well.
Is there a way, if this is approved, can we have a report in, say, six months? We can see what activity is going on 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 this, I I'm I'm very interested in knowing how this thing progresses. Um, besides, I like the names of this stuff, it's kind of cool. Um, I I would like to see how it's progressing, I don't want to wait until next summer and and find out where it was, I'd kind of like to see how it's progressing during the year.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Um, to piggyback on what Mr. Hammond was saying, haven't we had Reflex and Frax and Gizmos for a while? At least a few years?
Reflex, we've had at least a few years, it's not all sites had it the first year or two, I think it went district-wide, maybe a few years ago. Frax is a little more recent, it's a newer product, I think that might have been, I think we might have purchased that during distance learning, I want to say. And then Gizmos, um, is at the secondary level, I can't recall when that was brought in, so Reflex, I think, is the one we've had the longest, though. Yeah.
And Gizmos also.
You might be right.
Um, so. So you said Frax is relatively new. So is this something that? I I'm trying to to find out, um. Um. How teach, are teachers familiar with it, have they been trained on it, have they been trained enough on it? Have they been trained to comprehensive, are they comfortable with it, do we know any of that?
So, uh, it's a very user-friendly program, students, it's it's a game-based program. Um, and so they they do provide training, but usually within a half an hour, if that. Teachers who weren't already familiar with it pick it up pretty quickly. Um, what we've done a better job with is making sure teachers know how to access those reports, track their students' progress. Um, if there's a student that's stuck on a particular level to to investigate that as well. Um, so that's something that we've gotten better at also, and that's where I think more of the training will come into place too.
Thank you. Um, is this the only way that we're teaching basic math facts?
Definitely not, and it wouldn't be sufficient if that was the only way, it's it's one of the methods, but. We also know that in the, when math facts were just based on memorization, many kids won't retain that, so it's one part of it. But uh, mo- for example, with CGI, there's those number sense routines, built into many of those routines is getting more fluent with math facts as well. So we're trying, we definitely approach it in different ways, knowing that some students do well with games, other students really aren't drawn to that, so it's not the only way.
Um, is there a gap in fundamental, we're talking about fundamental math skills right now, is there a gap in fundamental math skills that has been identified since COVID?
I would say that from what we, what it looks like in the literature and what we've seen anecdotally is that more students in math. Are struggling with conceptual understanding, problem solving, the higher level math um areas. That's not to say that there haven't been students who have struggled with math facts, but as a district, we've done pretty well with math facts compared to other areas of it. Not that we can't continue to address it, um, but it's as in the grand scheme of math, math fact is kind of a lower level, it's still important, but it doesn't require as much. Reasoning, communicating your thoughts, uh, problem solving.
And you, you had um previously mentioned um memorization, just basic memory memorization. Of um elementary math facts, addition, subtraction, um multiplication, division, do we no longer? Teach by memorization?
We, I think it's still something that many students use, but there's a recognition in the research that it's not the only way, and there are many mathematicians. Who have not memorized their facts, but they have, they can think flexibly about numbers and combine numbers, um, so the number sense. Having a strong number sense is is recognized as more important than simply memorizing facts. The idea of memorization or fluency is that you're not using your working brain, your working memory um on a math problem. So that if students who are struggling with that, then they're, it's harder for them to do a math problem if they're struggling with something basic. But kids have different strategies to come up with a computation that may or may not be memorization, but the important part is that they're fluent with their math facts. And that they uh have a strong number sense.
So that is still a um, a, something that could be in the quiver, um, memorization along with. Um, the Explore Learning, it sounds like it's it's kind of a game?
Yes.
Platform?
It is.
Okay, so since it's sort of a game platform, it doesn't, doesn't seem like it necessarily has to tie into the elementary curriculum.
No, it's.
It's just basic.
And it can be done at home as well, so so it doesn't take away from instructional time.
And have we, have we been using this? For a while?
I believe. We first brought it in, I I don't remember exactly, but we've had it for at least a few years now, Reflex Math.
And I'm asking you this right now, so I apologize, I'm I'm sure you don't have any data, but um, do we have any data of the efficacy?
Yeah, we do, we have looked at, every year we look at what the growth of our students, we check with the vendors also to compare, how do we compare with other districts or um. We ask teachers about it too, I mentioned our CIA meetings, Reflex is another one that's almost always at or near the top of the requests of teachers that we renew. Um, so there, there's a sense amongst teachers that it's effective, um, and I think also that. It's easier for them to to have their students using something that for most students is just a fun activity for them. Um, so in as far as the efficacy, we have seen significant growth every year. And we've looked at it, uh, the sites look at it, teachers look at it, so overall, it has been effective as far as the amount of facts, the growth in fluency. Um, and it also helps us to identify students who might not be making uh that progress.
We see a growth in um. We see a growth in students learning basic math facts, but we still, there's still a gap for our math scores. Are you presenting anything tonight? That addresses that? The gap in our math skills? The gap in our math skills?
So, tonight, this program is really math fluency in facts, which is a piece of math. I think the work we're doing with CGI, the work we're doing with our professional development plans, the work that we'll continue to do, the analysis we'll do with our data. Definitely, we need to address much more than just the math fact fluency. This is a relatively smaller, it's an important piece, but yeah.
Just a small piece.
Yep.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
I don't, I don't really know if I have a question, more of a wonderment. I'm familiar with, I think, a very similar program, it was ST Math, Gigi the Penguin, right? Can you speak to if this is similar in providing differentiation with regards to the gaps in, in math fluency? That was targeted in a similar program? Does that component exist?
I would, to the extent that it tracks students where, how far along they are in their math fact fluency, that, to that extent, it is differentiated. So, a student who's at a beginning level will be getting, will be playing games at that level. And as a student who might even be advanced beyond their grade level, can be challenged at a level that's higher. I'm familiar with ST Math, too. And I think although they do have some math fact fluency aspects of it, they also attempt at least to teach students concepts of math in games with Gigi the Penguin. So, they, it's a much more ambitious program. But I guess the similarity would be that it tracks, it meets students where they are along that continuum.
Anything else? Okay, did you have a question?
No, I was gonna stab at a motion.
Well, okay then, let's have a motion.
I move to approve Second Step Program renewal and expansion and
No, no, we're not on Second Step.
I'm sorry. Agreement with Explore Learning LLC and have it come back after the completion of the first semester and the time to bring back the data so that we can see the progress.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, further discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
You know, I wasn't sure about this one. I, again, because I had wanted to do a deeper dive and really see some things so that I understood it. I really appreciate board member Hammond's ask that it come back after the first semester for some evaluation, because that's what I want. I want to see the data, I want to see what we're doing. And because of that motion, I'm going to go ahead and say yes because I appreciate the ask for the data, and I will be looking forward to that data.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we are now at Second Step Program renewal and expansion.
The Board of Education is requested to approve a renewal agreement with the Committee for Children to expand the Second Step Program to access their social-emotional learning curriculum via digital licenses for each elementary and middle school for the 2324 school year. Second Step Programs help students build social-emotional skills like nurturing, positive relationships, managing emotions, and setting goals so they can thrive in school and in life. Second Step has been piloted during the 2223 school year at Wild Rose School of the Creative Arts, Mayflower, and Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet with great success. After careful consideration, we plan to, we would like to see the program expand to all elementary and middle schools for the 23 and 24 school year.
Questions, wonderments?
Questions. Thank you, thank you for this item. The question that I have is I know that it's been around here for a long time, and I appreciate staff's ability to actually implement it and get it out into our schools and working. There was, here on the background, and I'm gonna read it for public, Second Step has piloted during, was pil, has, geez, tried reading again. Go back to remedial. Second Step has been piloted during the 2223 school year at Wild Rose, Mayflower, and Santa Fe with great success. After careful consideration, we plan to expand our use of Second Step, all elementary and middle 2324 school year. This speaks directly to an item that board member Anderson has spoken about at great length, is that we have many programs that we have implemented to make sure that our students have tools in their toolbox for success. And this is not a renewal, I mean, this is not a new program, but yet a program that's been sitting around on the shelf for quite a long time. And it's recently been put into place that it's an actual program now. But when the words "great success" are used, and there's nothing else behind that that tells me what, what the great success was, I have no measurement of its effectiveness. So, my question is, my ask will be, I appreciate the program. What I'd like to see in the staff reports from now on is that measurement. So, not only the board can see it, but more importantly, the community can see it. I think it should be part of our storytelling that we talked about earlier in the meeting, you know, that we have Gustavo now to help us get our word out. We can get the word out about our success in a staff report. And it should have the ability so that anybody wanted to know, well, how was this successful? Right there in the background, spell it out, or somewhere in the staff report, if someone wanted to take the time to read it. So, mine is a critique of how we write these things. Not that the program itself, it's how we explain the program and how we put it out into the public.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
I have a question. Is this program, is it a program that is presented to students digitally? Or is it a digital program that gives instruction to staff to then personally present to students?
The elementary version of Second Step, there's actually two different ways that it can be facilitated. The original way, they were kits, and you still might see some of those inside some of the classrooms with puppets and so on for the primary grades. However, probably about two years ago, the elementary has expanded to have digital licenses as well as middle school. The great thing about that, so it creates teacher-led units that are very user-friendly, easy to use, and provides pretty much a script that the teacher could follow. And so, you could think about a potential, like a math teacher, maybe this is not their specialty, but this gives them a common lesson plan that they could follow to deliver to the students. So, it's accessed online via the digital licenses.
It's the teacher who accesses it online and then delivers it to the students?
Correct, and/or the school counselor, administrator, or social worker.
I'd like to just make a comment. I had the opportunity to do a learning walk where they were doing this, and it was extraordinary to see how, and later in the year, how empathic, how kind, how connected the students were in working through this lesson. So, it might be beneficial for, that's a good way, a metric maybe perhaps for our board members to see that in future, because it was really, I can't remember if you were there with me that day or not. It was really, I saw, I think, two or three of them, and it was, it was very impressive. And the students not only got a lot out of it, they were highly engaged, and it was, it was a good sense of community and good lesson in kindness.
And possibly to connect with what Mr. Hammond and Ms. Lockerbie were saying, to bring in the research-based that's compiled on a national level of all the programs that are out there, and this one is at the top in terms of the choices you can make for social-emotional learning. That data is, it's not specific to our schools, but in general, the research to support the efficacy of Second to None might be helpful for us.
Will do, thank you.
Okay. There are no further questions or discussion, we'll entertain a motion. Second Step.
Move to approve.
Okay, second. And we'll call for a vote.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board president Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
The 2223, no, 2324 school year bus schedule.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the bus schedule for the 2324 school year, home-to-school transportation. The Transportation Board policy requires the Board of Education to approve bus stop locations each year. The 2324 bus schedule reflects home-to-school transportation for elementary students, including early Wednesday, including each Wednesday's early release time. The schedule takes into consideration the special education transportation needs, possible reduced enrollment at the elementary level, and the restructuring of various bus routes. Transportation ridership will be monitored closely for any necessary modifications to the schedule.
Questions, discussion?
Thank you. Brad Oaks first pickup time at Altern and Myrtle is very early, it's 6:50 a.m. It's the earliest time of any of the schools, even those which also start at 8 a.m. I know Mayflower starts at 8:15, so not all schools start at the same time. Can you explain why there is a 6:50 a.m. pickup for Brad Oaks at Altern and Myrtle?
I'll ask Anthony Parata, who's the director of MOT, to come up to speak to the technical components of that schedule.
Board, board member, president Golar, board members, superintendent Ryan, community. Looking at that one, that bus has two routes. And in between those scheduled areas or routes, there's special ed students in between. So, it's based on, the bus is down there. It follows its route to the school. So, to be able to hit every route and the ESY students, we have to start at that time to get them to school on time in order to, we try to get them there a little early so they can have breakfast. And then that bus goes to the second route, which Mayflower starts fifteen minutes later. It's, we have six buses on the route, so most of them have two pickups or two school sites that they pick up for. And in every, in every route, they have special ed students. And the ones, we only have two wheelchairs with, two buses with wheelchairs. So, we have to make specific routes for those students on special ed that have wheelchair, that would need wheelchairs. And if we're not able to pick those ones up, then we, we contract out with Georges, Jorge's.
Jorge's Get Around?
Yeah.
So, do we only own six buses?
We own eight, but we only have six drivers. So, the other two are field trips. So, when, when we have a field trip that starts at one, we can't do it because we're doing the routes. So, our lead driver is the backup for a field trip, and our mechanic is the backup for the field trip. So, what's been happening is we have a vacancy, and then if someone calls out sick, sick, there's our, our two backup drivers are used, so we can't do field trips. Why we contracted out.
You're saying we have two vacancies?
One just retired, June eighth. So, we had one vacancy to begin with.
Are we flying those vacancies?
Yes.
If those vacancies got filled, would that change that pickup time? Because then we would have eight buses, right?
Then we'd be relying on our backup drivers, which, if somebody calls out sick, if we have eight routes, somebody calls out sick, I have no backup driver.
If we, no, I'm saying if we, if we filled the two open positions?
We would have six.
If we filled the two vacant positions, then we'd have eight. We only have four now?
We have four right now.
Oh, we have four.
And the two lead and mechanic are the backups. So, when the mechanic is driving, which he did for the past two months, he's not working on buses or the fleet.
So, we have six buses, but we can only use four, and two of those, when we only have two that have the chairlift for the wheelchair?
Yes, but we have eight buses total. So, two sit in the yard for the field trips and our backup drivers, because the six are dedicated to the routes.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Do we have any data on chronic absenteeism that points back to students who are unable to get transportation to school consistently who live within the mile and a half range? Because this, the requirements to ride the bus, our students must live a mile and a half or more away from school, correct? Am I correct in that?
Yes.
So, do we have any data or any idea of chronic absenteeism of our students that could point back to their inability to get transportation because they live within that mile and a half range?
I can look in our attendance system here to see what the reasons are that we have for our district, to see if that's identifiable, and I can share that with the board in an update.
Thank you. I see that, so we have this mile and a half. Who sets that, that range? Is that like a state law or county?
So, that's actually our board policy, I believe, that has been set. I would have to look at the board policy to tell you the year that it was set, but that's actually something that we've inherited as board policy here.
It's something that I'd like to have brought to the board to look at and consider, since it's a board policy, just that mile and a half radius. It would probably be helpful if it was tied with the chronic absenteeism information when you're able to get that.
We can certainly look at any of those items. What I will share with the board is when we do review routes, and it's in here that we should be reviewing the routes, we will, and there is cost associated with route changes. And so, I will share that with the board when we do take time to look at that for you.
I appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? We have further discussion? Okay, we'll call it to a vote.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board president Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, the agreement between Monrovia Unified School District and VMA Communications.
and V M A Communications.
I don't mind presenting this one. The Board of Education has requested to approve an agreement between Monrovia Unified School District and V M A Communications to provide marketing and public relations services to the district over the following year. Specifically, this specific agreement, I used specific twice, apologize for that, is to provide support for our State of the Schools event, which has become a tradition in the district.
Questions, conversation, discussion? No?
I'm sorry, who asks for it to be pulled off a consent? Okay.
I don't have questions. I just wanted it pulled to be able to vote on it separately from the consent.
Well, then what the heck, I'll talk. I have a question. When we were doing this last year, my understanding was that they were in a support position to our information officer. I think it's roughly the same amount of dollars as it was last year, if I'm not mistaken. It's pretty close. But I thought it was in a support mechanism because of being new. And now that we have a year under our belt and going forward, I'm wondering if this is something that we should continue to do and bring it fully in-house. That's the item that I like to discuss. And I'd entertain comments. I would like to see it all in-house. I think we can tell our story pretty dang well.
I mean, obviously, if the board wants to discuss that, that would be fine. I have, certainly, I have some insight that I can share on that as well if the board wants to hear it.
Yeah, I think that's important to hear, definitely.
Thank you. Okay, so with respect to this, when State of the Schools began, my understanding is that V M A did a full coordination of the event from top to bottom, including the scripts, including the detailed PowerPoint presentation, and then day of the event management. And then there was also a component at the time that had a, I think they called it like a sizzle wheel or something like that, where it was like a video, a video presentation. And then there was some live streaming components. This way, we had it forever, and there was one year. Since bringing on our P I O, we have reduced the cost that we've paid with V M A or paid to V M A to do this. So for example, the contract or the agreement is a not-to-exceed amount, and it's about forty thousand, and that's all in if we were to use every bit of it. It was pretty close to the same verbiage as last year's agreement. The not-to-exceed was maybe a thousand dollars less or so. And one of the reasons why this one has a little bit of a higher number than last year by about a thousand or fifteen hundred bucks was because as we were debriefing, one of the things that we realized, we didn't have, we didn't have a professional opportunity for photos to be taken during the event, especially at the VIPs, and during, because our P I O is pretty busy being all over the place and trying to make sure things are up and running. The script is a tremendous heavy lift for staff, and we have had Gustavo, our P I O, take that piece on. And he spends a tremendous amount of time compiling the amount of information that is provided based on the themes that the board wants to touch base on or to update on. And then staff puts things together and gives that to him, and it's raw. And then he turns it into a script that's usable for the event. V M A supports him with that now by being a second set of eyes, ears, and editing. The other piece with V M A, though, that they have fully taken on are all of the graphic productions that go with it. So for example, if you look at last year's, forgive me, I'm new to the district. I've been here two years. I think this past year, based on feedback that I've heard from the board directly and also from feedback from our community, this really was one of the better events that have all been great. This one's kind of set itself apart. And I think at least that's in large part because V M A was able to concentrate so much on the production of the, of the presentation that ran background. It looked fantastic. And we don't have the staff in-house to be able to spend significant amounts of time on both. We just don't. The other piece that V M A has been very helpful with is helping us with all of the, the production, or not production, all of the promotional materials that go with it. So as you know, we send out a, like, pretty nice invite to people that the board has already identified as V I Ps, for lack of a better term, or maybe that is the right term, certainly, as well as the invitation to the public. And then they also assist with marketing beyond what Gustavo would do in-house. So V M A's support and services to maintain the event in the way that it looks is really critical. It would be very difficult for us without their help to maintain the event the way it looks by taking it entirely in-house. Oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing. V M A is also really helpful with day-of management, which is really critical. So State of the Schools doesn't just happen where, and I know you know this, the board knows this, where it's like, hey, it's five, everybody show up for State of the Schools. You know, the day of that event is a full-day piece. And V M A is very helpful with setting up, coordinating, checking in V I Ps, and then making sure that the operation runs really smooth throughout the course of it. And with Gustavo being our point person, he just can't do it. He's spread too thin. And then other staff members are involved in other areas as well and have to manage certain things, the food services, the students that help us, and all of those things. So I think that V M A's support for the event is critical. I think the event has a first-class feel to it. I think it's something that we're also quite proud of. I know I am. And I think the reason for that is because of V M A's support.
And I appreciate how it looked. I really do. When it was V M A's to do the first time, we ended up with a nice product that we could never show anybody, gone forever, because it was never recorded. So, I mean, while they have all been, let's go back to the intent. The intent of State of the Schools is that we're giving a report card to the community about what's happening in the schools. That's what we're doing. And so how we deliver that message is obviously very important. Part of the reason that I was very supportive of, and I can only speak for myself, is of getting an information officer is because you want the ongoing story throughout the year because this is a district that's alive, and we want to make sure we get that information. I did think in the future that we would have it in-house, telling our story, because we can tell our story so much better than someone we have to educate of what our story is. I was willing last year to spend the money to have them subsidize time and energy because it is such a heavy lift. I don't know that I'm as, I don't know that I want to support it again this year because of the fact that I think we can do it in-house. I think there's a way that we can give the quality product to the people in our community that expresses the things that we have accomplished and we hope to accomplish in the school district, and we can do it ourselves. I am very sensitive to the fact about staff time and things like that. But I'm not a hundred percent convinced that V M A is the vehicle. I think it's the one that we know. I think therefore it's comfortable, and it's no disrespect to anybody at V M A. They certainly got us to where we are. I'm just thinking there's a transition time, and perhaps now is the transition. It's here, it's now, and maybe we should take advantage of it. That's what I might.
Bito. I think that our P I O, Gustavo O'Ginn, is fantastic. I think that our staff is fantastic. I think that there's support that we can get, you know, in terms of photographers, if we need extra photographers, if we need other people to run, to make videos, run video, run lights and stuff like that. It's something that we can do in-house. And it's something that I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to do in-house.
Yeah, I guess I was under that impression, too, that the cost would be scaled back this year as we transition into doing it more in-house. I think we need to explore ways to cut this cost. And one is it in-house. The other way is also, K J M, since we're using it, need them now to video and stream it. They're a nonprofit, so that cost, you know, should be minimal compared to V M A. And I understand they're not doing the day-of operation and any of that preparation work. But they also have photographers, too, besides the video. So I think we need to explore other ways of doing this and streamlining the State of the Schools. I think it's an important event. I think it's a great place to talk about accomplishments and challenges that the district faces. It was extremely important, I think, as we got out of the pandemic and communicated the whole process from beginning to end of how that worked and how we, you know, met those challenges through the pandemic. We're still feeling the effect of the pandemic with a lot of the discussion tonight was about that achievement, that gap that we're experiencing in math and in other areas. What are we doing to, to get our kids to the point where they're, you know, they should be at the, at the standard level for their grade level? So it's a great way to communicate all those things. So I don't want to see it to go away, but I definitely think we need to explore other ways of presenting. I mean, just recently, our neighbors to the east of us had their very first State of the Schools, and they did it in their football stadium. I didn't, I didn't see it, but I mean, there's other ways of doing these things, and I think we do need to be open to that. And keep it to a minimum, a short period of time, because people are busy, and we want, we want an audience. We want people to tune in, whether it's in person or live-streamed. But we, let's, let's look at other ways of doing it and streamlining the, the process and also the cost.
If the board wants a different version of State of the Schools, we're happy to do our best to provide it. And we're certainly happy to do our best to put a first-class production using in-house support to the extent we can.
So with that.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Done.
Very strange thing. I move to. I have a second, or? I move to approve. Yeah.
So hearing not a second on that motion, it fails to even be called to a vote?
Is there an alternative vote?
There could be.
If there's not, it just goes away?
Well, the, you're right. This contract goes away. The alternative is exploring other avenues.
That comes back in a different board meeting.
So I suppose one thing that would be helpful is, is there a member or two who would be interested in advising exactly what they have in mind for State of the Schools moving forward? You know, again, this item was presented with the intent to maintain the event the way it had been. And there was a similar conversation about this a year ago with Ms. Lockerbie leading it. So are there a couple of members that would be interested in maybe forming a subcommittee to identify who or how they want State of the Schools to be? The reason I suggest that is that I don't want to be in a position where I'm guessing what the board is interested in for its State of the Schools event.
I think the president should form an ad hoc committee to do that outside of a board meeting. Do all that sitting here. But the president, certainly within their purview, to assemble an ad hoc committee to do that.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you, and, okay, your question?
I have a question in terms of timing. What is our timeframe on this kind of agreement? My concern is that if we explore other options or don't explore other options, whatever that looks like, there's going to be a timeframe that's critical. Do you happen to know when that will end? So we need to know this is, this is what we're doing by, you know, X date?
Well, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because I am concerned about that. You know, and one of the reasons last year why I made the recommendation to continue was because we ended up so late in the year. We are at the end of June. We're going into July, which is dark. And you know what happens in July with vacations and family time and all of those things. And really, the production and preparation for this begins shortly thereafter. So if the boards, and honestly, it does start kind of to a degree, but it picks up in earnest in August because you're talking about an event that's set for mid-October. And things can't just be done the day or before the event. It really needs to be done at least a couple of weeks in advance, and then there's walkthroughs. So again, if the board has a specific vision for what it wants State of the Schools to be next year, we're certainly all ears, and we'll do our best to deliver it. However, time is pretty precious. And if there's going to be a fundamental reorganization of what this event is and how it looks, that's going to become very, very difficult for us. And I'm just trying to be upfront about that.
Because I, I think about how the city delivers their State of the City address. Now, we have our own facility, so we're very fortunate there. We don't have to rent Look Theater to do it, but it is a PowerPoint projected. And it is each elected official speaking to, you know, the programs or whatever, you know, they're speaking to with the city. It's really no different than what we've been doing, except last year, a few other things were incorporated, which I think there were great additions. I'm not, I'm not knocking it, but I mean, it can be done in an hour, and it can be done, you know, without a lot of the bells and whistles. Again, we have the facility, so there's no issue there. I just, I just think it can be done that way. And then they, and K J M streams it for them.
Well, if I misunderstood, forgive me, but I thought I heard, and so maybe I misheard, that there was an interest in doing something different than what State of the Schools looked like. You mentioned football field.
No, no, I'm just saying, we need to think out of the box here, you know? If it's going to be costing us this much every year, we actually, we do need to think out of that original structure because some of us were under the impression that V M A was a temporary thing to transition us to doing it in-house.
Okay, I'm gonna.
Okay, sorry.
Bring ours back. Thank you over here, my support. And if we need to bring it back for an item under Board Business?
And if we need to bring it back for an item under Board Business. To discuss more fully. We can do that at the next board meeting. Okay. All right. So we'll move on to action items. And our first action item is the. Contract with Lemonix. DBA, Doing Business As Go Guardian. Okay, Dr. Francois.
The Board of Education has requested to approve a contract with Lemonix Incorporated DBA Go Guardian. For a three-year subscription beginning July 1, 2023. And ending June 30 of 2026. Go Guardian offers robust features for managing and monitoring our classrooms in a digital age. It provides teachers and administrators with tools to streamline classroom workflows, monitor student progress, and facilitate effective online instruction. Teachers have expressed a need for a better system to organize, manage, and oversee students as they complete work on their technology devices. This has become increasingly important to ensure student engagement and student safety and security. After piloting Go Guardian with our 21st Century Learning Pilot alongside another popular classroom management application. Our pilot teachers unanimously decided that Go Guardian was the better option.
Questions? Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Francois. Just a clarifying question. Is this the, sort of the overarching software that helps? You can log in with one and you access everything to, to sort of streamline and simplify the login process?
So that's, relates to the single sign-on. With, with this application will, will help do. For the classroom teacher, imagine the classroom teacher in front of the classroom and being, having the ability to be able to see what's on each student. Chromebook screen individually allows the teacher to go on and push out content to all their, the students. As well as to monitor what the students are working on, on their individual Chromebooks.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Questions? Motion?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And we are at public hearing for our local control accountability. Plan. L cap. And. This. This is a public hearing for the local control accountability. Plan and does not require a vote at this time. I am going to open the public hearing first at. Nine twenty-five. Ms. Becerra, have we received any speaker cards for our public hearing?
There are none.
Okay, then. I hereby close the public hearing at. Nine twenty-six. Okay, and next we have the purchase of Dell VM Ware. Ms. Garcia.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the purchase of Dell VM Ware VX Rail Server with five-year licensing and support from Redesign. The investment in Dell VM Ware VX Rail Server represents a significant advancement in our technology infrastructure. Bringing forth a multitude of benefits for our educational community. The redesign team will help install the new equipment, migrate current data from our existing equipment, and train the Technology Services System Team in ongoing maintenance. The district infrastructure is currently running on servers that were procured in 2016. As the servers have reached the end of life support, life and support, it is imperative that new servers be purchased to ensure the day-to-day functionality of the district's digital footprint and network.
Are, is this? People, are this, are these people or is it a program?
It's actually a program, and Irene can go ahead and speak to us on some technical components for you.
Good evening, Board President Golar, Board Members, Cabinet and Community. The VX Rail, the VX Rail is actually a server, so it's hardware. The company that you have before you there, Redesign, are people who are going to install that hardware, that piece of hardware for us. And train us, myself and my systems, and our systems analyst here on how to maintain, upkeep that server.
Thank you. I'm always watching to. It, it's always my hope that any training that's needed is sufficient training. I know this is a different arena, and this is tech. Do you, as you're looking at this, is, are, are you confident? That you'll get the training that you'll need to allow you and your team to be able to run with this?
Definitely. This is on par with what we already have. So the software that's included on the server is what we're already using, so we're very well-equipped and trained on it. It's just any additional training on some of the new changes that have been made that the redesign team will help us with. For all intents and purposes, it's just the hardware piece that we really need to renew.
I get it now. It's just the hardware. I get it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, entertain a motion? So moved. Second. We can call for the vote?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
If I could just mention really quickly, is Mr. Goldustani still here? Thank you. This is, we've seen a lot of tech improvements, hardware, software. All that kind of techware recently since you've come to the district, and I, I'm noticing it and I'm appreciating it, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate your appreciation.
More importantly, you preach the.
We have more.
Putting it in.
And item four, purchase of the Forte Gate Firewall.
The next few items we're going to share tonight are in conjunction with infrastructure.
Yes.
And so thank you for recognizing that because these next couple of items will continue to touch on that. The Board of Education has requested to approve the purchase of Forte Gate Firewall with the five-year licensing agreement. As part of the, of the district's ongoing efforts to enhance our technology infrastructure. The Technology Services Department has diligently assessed various firewall solutions that align with our requirements. Following a comprehensive analysis, we have determined that the Forte Gate Firewall offers the optimal solution to address the security needs of Monrovia Unified School District. Impex will help install the new equipment, configure networking rules, and train the Technology Services Network Team in ongoing maintenance. It has become more, it has become evident through our evaluation that our current firewall provided by Cisco Meraki is impeding the efficiency of our network. As the license for this existing firewall is due to expire in July. We strongly recommend replacing it with the Forte Gate Firewall to ensure seamless and robust network performance.
Questions? We entertain a motion? Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, just really quick. So for the end user, let's say the student. Will they see a difference with this? With this firewall?
They wouldn't notice a difference on our network. If anything, it would be quicker because we would have less of a bottleneck. So that would be to our students.
Yeah, yeah. And the same thing for teachers that are using the network and all of that. Okay, thanks.
No further discussion? Okay, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We'll call for the vote?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And the next one, purchase of Meraki Data Core or Firewall and Dell Server.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the purchase of Cisco Meraki Data Core Switching with a five-year license agreement. As part of the district's ongoing efforts to enhance our technology infrastructure. The upgrade to next-generation firewalls and computation servers will require new Cisco Meraki Data Core switching to integrate these technologies. Along with the request to purchase a new firewall and computer servers for our network operating center. These Meraki cores are necessary to provide seamless integration into our existing network.
Any questions? Comments? I just want to note that the contract includes a name that needs to be. Elliot. That person is no longer in our district. The contact, the second name listed.
Just saw that. We'll go ahead and update that. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay. Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And we are at the public hearing for the 2023-24 Proposed Adopted Budget. This item is a public hearing for the 2023-24 Proposed Adopted Budget and does not require a vote at this time. I am going to open the public hearing first at nine thirty-four. Ms. Becerra, do we have any speaker cards for the public hearing?
There are none.
And I hereby close the public hearing at nine thirty-four. Now at. Collective Memorandums of Understanding with California School Employee Association, CSEA. For increase of hours. Dr. Pacia.
Thank you, Ms. Golar. And before I go, items seven through twelve. I would just like to acknowledge both CSEA and MTA. As well as my, my director, Ms. Huff. For the countless hours that were put into generating all the negotiations this past year. I've been very collaborative and I'm thankful for their partnerships. I did want to acknowledge them. The Board of Education is requested to approve the collective memorandums of understanding. With the California in School Employees Association, Chapter 20, to increase the work hours for bus driver, custodian, and library technician classifications. Monrovia Unified School District has entered into several memorandums of understanding with the California, with CSEA, Chapter 20, to increase the work hours. Of those classifications. Recruitment for classified positions throughout the 22-23 school year has been challenging and retaining classified employees even more so. As an added incentive to both attract and retain quality classified personnel. The district has entered into memorandums of understanding in partnership with CSEA to increase the hours of these classifications. In attempt to make the district competitive with that of other school districts in the region.
Are there questions? You have a question?
So can you explain? With the increase of hours. So let's say a librarian has six hours a day. And it's increased to eight hours a day. I'm making up numbers. Is that librarian forced? To work eight hours a day, or is it an option to maintain their current working hours?
All of these increases in hours are optional to the respective employee and the respective classification. However, we did do extensive. Investigation with the, the people who lead these respective classifications and divisions. Looking back at why some of these positions in the past were cut. And the effect that it ultimately has on the, the system, going back to the cleanliness of schools, so on and so forth. So, but again, we will not force anybody to take those hours. However. When we fly those positions in the future, they will be at that, that hour.
So a new, a new employee into one of those positions would be required to accept those, those longer hours?
Correct.
Yeah, just to clarify or tease it out a little bit more. For example, earlier this evening, we heard we have a vacancy. In a bus driver. It's more likely that we will be able to attract. Someone to apply to the position because it's a full eight-hour day as opposed to a chopped-up day, right?
Their, their day will still be, I forgot, what's the term? It's, it's a split, it's a split shift. But we'll get to a point where it will positively affect them because that, that split will be a little bit shorter. And then we'll obviously get to the point of being able to do those additional runs and not have to hire outside agencies to do those runs. So that's, that's the hope. But I, I will add that in the San Gabriel Valley Human Resources Group that I participate in. Bus drivers and special education assistants are the two areas that everybody is really having a struggle in hiring. And so everybody is kind of moving towards this. But again, looking at it for, for our needs, that reduction of the time for the split shift and the ability to have our drivers be able to do more of the additional runs. Athletic events, field trip, et cetera, was a big motivating factor.
Perfect. Thank you.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we will call for the vote?
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And we are at setting of salary for the new classification payroll technician.
The Board of Education has requested to set the salary for the new classification payroll technician at range 29 on the 12-month classified salary schedule. This position is a 12-month, eight-hour classification. On February 22, 2023, the Board of Education established a new classified position under the direction of the Superintendent slash Designee. On March 27, 2023, the Personnel Commission classified the position as payroll technician, adopted the class description attached. And discussed an appropriate salary range for this position. Based on the discussion and the comparison to positions with similar duties and employment standards. The Personnel Commission recommends the Board of Education that the salary for this position be set at range 21 on the 12-month classified salary schedule.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. I apologize, twenty-nine.
Other questions or comments? Discussion? Yes?
Just to be clear, I understand that this is a new. Classification. But it's not a new. It, it's for a position that is currently here that is vacant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We can entertain a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll call for the vote?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Creation of a new classified position payroll specialist.
The Board of Education has requested to establish a new classified position payroll specialist. In an effort to ensure that all positions are accurately classified and there is an accurate description, depiction of the current job duties. The position of payroll specialist being presented to the Board of Education for establishment. A review of the Business Services Department determining need for a clear hierarchical structure in the payroll department. After analysis of our current position, it was determined that this position of payroll specialist is necessary to be established.
Do we have any discussion or questions? Do we have any discussion or questions? Yes?
Same question as the previous item, just for clarification. This is um, a reclassification of a current position that is open currently, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
And we'll call for the vote?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, creation of a new classified position risk management coordinator.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the creation of a new confidential classified management position, risk management coordinator. It is recommended that the Board create a classified management position titled Risk Management Coordinator under the direction of the superintendent or designate. Would perform, would perform responsible and technical services in the administration of general liability, workers' compensation, risk management, emergency preparedness and safety, and safety preparer reports to maintain records and files on claims, litigations, injuries, general liability and property loss. Document and ensure communication of key risks to identify and analyze areas of potential risk.
Questions, comments?
Yes.
Will this increase the level of service for any staff member that has a claim currently with Monrovia Unified? Do you see this as a positive step for employees in Monrovia Unified School District?
We, we certainly do and, and part of what is the, the impetus behind this was that the duties of this particular position are currently split among four, four or five, five, five people in the organization, so part of the, the leaves for certificated classes done by one, by class certificate classified another, uh, workman's comp leaves by another, so it's, it's really spread out and so it creates, and, and the team does a fabulous job of, of making it work, but it does create the opportunity for, in a very highly technical area, for, for things to potentially fall through the cracks and, and services not to be rendered, um, for people to potentially have issues with workman's comp leave, et cetera. So, that, that is the ultimate purpose is to increase efficiency as well as to increase service.
Thank you, I do appreciate that because um, not just school districts, but any company out there, that always seems to be a point of contention. The employee who is going through whatever they're going through that required a workman's comp um, claim can't get their answers, not timely, they don't know who to contact. So, the, I think this is a positive direction that we're going in here, so that employees of Monrovia Unified have one point of contact, be able to get their answers quickly, so I do appreciate that you thought about this.
Do we have any other comments?
Just escape me for, I'll get it right back.
Entertain a motion?
So moved. Did you remember?
I didn't.
Okay. Um, and I had it written down. Has the possibility of this position being created been included in the budget that we were presented? Or would that have an impact at all?
Because it has not been approved, it was not included in the budget.
And to be clear, this would be a new position, not a current position that's reclassified and vacant. This would be adding a new position into the organizational chart.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I motioned.
You motioned?
Yep.
And do we have a second?
Second.
And we'll call for the vote?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
I think that um, we are too small of a district to be able to afford adding this position right now. I have great um, confidence in um, the people that have been handling risk management up until this point. Business Services, Ms. Garcia, um, your assistant Esther Gray, Human Resources, Dr. Pachia, um, even Anthony Parada and MOT and um, and Ricardo um, Harris and Ricardo Harris, thank you very much, I'm sorry Ricardo. Um, I think that those are all employees that have been attentive, um, are approachable and know their job and do it well and I think that we just, as a district this size, can't afford to add another employee into um, the district um, office organizational chart, so my vote is no.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries four, one.
Setting of salary for classification instructional assistant special education.
The Board of Education is requested to set the salary for the classification instructional assistant special education, range twenty-one on the classified salary schedule. The position is a nine-month, six-hour classification. On February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Education established a new classification under the direction of the superintendent designate. On March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the Personnel Commission classified the position as instructional assistant special education, adopted the revised class description attached and discussed a appropriate salary for this position. Based on this discussion and the comparison to positions with similar duties and employment standards, the Personnel Commission recommends to the Board of Ed that the salary for this position be set at range twenty-one on the classified salary schedule. The effects therefore of this position have been approved by the district's classified union as indicated in the M O U attached.
Discussion, comments or questions? Entertain a motion?
Oh, sorry, I was slow, slow go.
I'm sorry.
My apologies. On the M O U, um, number two, all employees who wish to remain in their current classification in the Instructional Aid Assistance Bed Series will continue to work in the current classification and job description. So, do, is this seamless or do they need to notify someone um, that they wish to remain in their current classification?
If they wish to remain, there's nothing necessary. If they wish to pursue the new classification, which in most instances um, would be a, a, an increase in pay, um, and, and for many that are part-time and increase in hours, obviously, then they do, we do have the process that's, that's outlined by the P C rules and regs, which is, which is outlined, we are beholden to that, but um, we will work with them to uh, hopefully be able to move them into the position.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And we have the final item, approval of agreements with M T A in U S D.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the following agreements between M T A, I'm sorry, between Monrovia Unified School District and the Monrovia Teachers Association. The proposed agreements, Article Twelve Leaves of Absence and Article Eighteen Salaries and Benefits were presented to the Board of Education for Public Review on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Following public disclosure, it is now appropriate for the Board of Education to take official action and approve the contractual agreements, um, if they so choose.
Questions? Comments? Discussion? You have a comment? Or you have a question?
I just wanted some clarification, and you said if they so, so choose. If the board chooses?
It's always the, it's always the board's purview to, to approve or not approve. I did want to add that clarification as I hadn't put it in the, in the original description.
Okay. And entertain a motion?
So moved.
And I can second? And we'll call for a vote?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board President Golar?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. We are at future meetings and we should add that Friday, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, there is a special board meeting, uh, I believe the start time is eight A M, eight-thirty. Right? Um, June the twenty-eighth, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, six-thirty, and then we are dark the month of July and we return August ninth. Again, regular Board of Education meeting, six-thirties for the open session and August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, six-thirty, regular Board of Education. And we are at uh, new business. There is an item there, summer school. Is all grade, June twelfth. That it? Ta-da?
I believe the intent was just to remind the Board that summer school began on Monday.
Had already started, very fast turnaround. And I believe um, Board Member Clerk, Rob Hammond, has an item for new business?
Quick ask, uh, to maybe come before the next board meeting or if it's sooner, that's fine too, in a Friday update, uh, there was a comment that was made a few minutes ago about an org chart. I think it would be very beneficial to see an org chart for all of our campuses as well as the district office with the duties of each person that is on that org chart or the designation, I don't need a person's name, I need a designation and what their responsibilities are. We could get that by the next board meeting or sooner if possible.
Do we have any other items for new business? Okay, and then? Alrighty then. We will adjourn at nine fifty-four E M.